Alright.
Alrighty, so, I've started. Everybody, if you have any conflicts to the agenda, the ones who have the agenda we agree.
So.
So he's not here yet. Do you want to read your minutes real quick and then I'll?
Yeah. Oh, he's not here, yeah.
I'll, I'll text him and tell him already.
Colin, you mean?
Yeah.
June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, the Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Dean Hyden Chair presiding, members present were Schultz, Dozart, Hyden, and Mulbauer. Member absent was Rossberg. The previous meeting were read and approved. Board approved the change of wage for the County Attorney's Office, the Sheriff's Office, Louise in Veterans Affairs and General Relief, and change of wages for public health. The Board approved resignation of Jennifer Muff, A R N P, Public Health, at ten AM as advertised. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by, I almost said Dozart, sorry, it says Mulbauer, to open the public hearing for reclassification of a portion of K Avenue, beginning at twenty seven twelve K Avenue, and running southeast approximately nine hundred and forty feet to the end of K Avenue, as established by petition number five five eight. Said road generally lying in the northwest quarter, northwest quarter of section twenty five, Township eighty four, range thirty nine. Motion passed unanimously. There were no written or oral objections. At ten thirty nine, motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozart, to close the hearing. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Dozart, seconded by Mulbauer, to table the action of the resolution twenty four dash nineteen related to the reclassification of a portion of K Avenue line in section twenty five from Area Service Road C to Area Service Road B for July sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozart, to approve the audit presentation for fiscal year June thirtieth, twenty twenty three with Chris Nelson, with Brono Bell and Kind. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Dozart, to approve the following resolution, twenty four dash twenty appropriations per department for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. Voting aye. Schultz, Dozart, Hyden, and Mulbauer voting nay, non. Motion passed. Motion was made by Dozart, seconded by Mulbauer, to approve the following resolution, twenty twenty four dash twenty one, transferring of funds. That would be a transfer of seven hundred thousand from general basic into general supplemental, and one hundred and thirty seven thousand five hundred from rural basic into rural supplemental. Voting aye. Schultz, Dozart, Hyden, and Mulbauer. Voting nay, non. Motion passed. Motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Mulbauer, to approve revised employee handbook, effective seven, one of twenty four. Motion passed unanimously. On motion due, seconded, the Board adjourned eleven fifty one AM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted at the holding courthouse on Friday, four thirty PM, proceeding at eight AM.
Anybody have any objections to change the agenda? Just set Colin.
Here. Give it further, you know.
Sounded pretty accurate to me. For the hearing. Yeah, Kyle's waiting for all this question about just kind of get some of that things moving. Alright. I just sent Colin a text, so he'll be coming when he has a chance. So, reports from supervisors, understanding committees. Did you have anything to say?
I do have something.
Alright.
I did not have a meeting last week, and I was trying to determine when would be the best time to talk to the Board about this. And I think that although we have a public hearing scheduled for July sixteenth on this issue, as far as that K Avenue, that it seems appropriate that you guys should have the information prior to that public hearing, instead of me springing it on you that day. And so, when Paul talked to us, and he said, I think it was in two thousand two or two thousand three, when we decided to change or classify these roads as either B level or C level. And so I got to thinking that, hey, if they decide to declare that a C level, that probably had to come before the Board of Supervisors back in the day and get it done. So I went back and searched the minutes from two thousand two and two thousand three, and I found that when they actually did that. And there was a resolution passed by the Board back in two thousand and two, how to classify a Level C road. What was the process? What had to go through? And so what I found, and this is what I wanted to pass out, is here was the resolution that was done when they declared K Avenue as a Level C road. And it was signed by every party that was there. And the way I read the resolution, when you see the third whereas on the front page, and it says, whereas the county has received a petition, and it's attached to this resolution, and it is signed by all the landowners adjoining the lane, requesting that the road be classified Area Service C. And at that point in time, it was. I think that the way the resolution reads is if there is a landowner, an adjoining landlord, that does not want that, a Level C road, then it's not. They can't stay a Level C road if an adjoining landlord, of which Casey Buck is an adjoining landlord, says, I don't want it to be Level C anymore, then it's not. I mean, that's the way I read the ordinance. And I guess it's a fear sometimes that I have, is that we pass these resolutions, and what happens twenty, thirty years down the road? How do we make sure that they're being followed? And so I think that's why it's important to look back, and I'm glad we tabled the tabled it last week, so we can research it and look at what exactly needs to be done. And I mean, the original resolution, which this kind of, so make, is a summation of that. But when they actually pass the Area Service Road C maintenance on March fourth of two thousand and three, it states, it says, resolution, it says, roads may only be classified as Area Service C by resolution of the Board upon petitions signed by all landowners adjoining the road. The resolution still specified the level of maintenance effort and the persons who will have access to the right to the road. So, like I said, to me, when I read that, all landowners adjoining the road have to agree, and they did at that point in time, and they don't now. So, to me, it's pretty simple answer. But I wanted you guys to have that, because, and look through it to see if maybe you read something different than I read. But, and that's why I didn't want, I didn't want, the best time was to let the Board know what I found.
Right now.
I didn't think that the public hearing would be the time to, that you try to read through it real quick, to try to determine how you interpreted that. But that's the way I interpret.
He doesn't have his address here. It's K Avenue. She had Wendell Arkansas. Does it, does it just own some?
Well, I don't think that Dean had built a house there then. I think Wendell just owned the property.
We got Dean and Beth signing, and they say it's twenty seven oh nine K F.
Maybe, maybe Wendell owned some of the property.
He owned that. Didn't he own that ground right along there and attempted to build and never got it accomplished? Is that one?
I think that was part of the way. I think Wendell might own the property. Dean bought the acres.
I'm thinking of the main road.
Just on the one that Gil bought. Yeah, Gil bought there.
That's right.
Which is the property that Paul bought and sold to?
Exactly.
That was the Arkansas.
That was, no, the, the, yes, yes, that was the one.
Paul bought that.
Okay, Paul bought that and sold that.
Exactly. Yes.
Been a couple of changes, but this is the first time.
Whereas the only persons who will have access rights to the road shall be.
Well, that makes sense. I mean, if they all had to agree going to Level C, and if they wouldn't have held, they didn't want to go on Level C.
Right.
Glad you brought that up.
Yeah.
So to me, it just makes sense. And if one of them now says, I don't want it to be a Level C, they now don't all agree, therefore.
When it sounded like to upgrade it so that he could build a house back there, he would pay for that rock to improve its, you know, status. Like what Kit Lantzig did down on that road that we were, we did, we did. He paid for a white rock and whatever, and it sounded like, you know, if they want to move up anymore, you know, this, if we go above C, that just removes the gate, correct?
Exactly.
If we would go to A, to, you know, to a gravel, then he has to pay for the gravel, Casey being, since he's the one that wants.
I, I mean.
Sounded like that was what was gonna happen.
Exactly. You weren't here at the public hearing, but Casey has said, I mean, he'll do all the maintenance on it. He doesn't want the county to cut down any trees. He'll do all the tree, he'll do all the snow removal. Do everything.
Well, I know he's very, you know, he's more about the wildlife and stuff like that, so I can't imagine that that's gonna be much more than ten year ground. I mean, maybe even said that.
He did.
To me, and I don't know what you guys think, I won't speak, but the biggest the biggest beef with the other landowners was that they lose the ability to tell trespassers to right to leave. That's what it really came down to.
That's what it boils down. I've had many conversations with her, they, and so, they.
Because if it's a Level B road, then it's county.
There is access.
And then they can say, I don't have to leave this county property.
Oh, I got it. That's what you're saying.
That's what you're saying, right?
So, but.
I talked to her, it's been a while back, so you're having a jugment memory.
The difference is that with Casey's house thing back there, it's not gonna be that vacant property where nobody's there to monitor it. Once they realize there's a house there, Casey said he might even have a gate further up and keep them from so, it's that middle space, because I drove out there, and boy, it's gonna be something in the winter.
Well, knowing Casey, there's probably gonna be trail cams all over the property.
I mean, you can see where there is a gate, it goes right into Casey's property. Now, if he would do that, I guess that would be up to him.
Right. But there is that space between Renee's and that gate that, you know, hoodlums come up and it must have been a problem over the last few years that they are concerned about his, what, and even Renee says she's chased people off since he's been building. And there's, he said that people could be.
And I think Paul has agreed to put a sign, you know, where you turn onto that property, that it is a dead end. And so that might deter people as they start to go up there, and they see a sign, it's a dead end, they might just back right out.
He should.
To deter, you know, that would deter that.
So you're thinking just one person?
Objects.
Maybe the county attorney should.
I would, I would agree with that full heartedly.
Coming in, I still have a text.
Like I said, that's the way I, I interpret that. But Carrie makes a very good point. The county attorney should. I am not an attorney.
Oh, you're not.
One I can be.
Yeah.
Renee's. She's the manager.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In your talks with Renee, if it goes to Level B, and this is what Craig brought up, Colin said, yeah, that's right, we, I gotta, she understands it. There's many things going in.
She does.
There'd be more eyes back there, living there, watching things.
She does.
It's not just an abandoned area.
I mean, I think Casey's gonna deal with more of it than they will.
I agree.
They will drive up there and then see how that road turns into kind of a dirt road, but then it's got the trees, it's kind of a pretty.
It is pretty.
And then, so the people go, I wonder where this road goes, and they'll drive back there, drive back there, drive back there, and they'll end up in Casey's home.
Yeah.
There's no place else to go, so we'll have to turn around. If they get stuck going back there, I would assume they would walk to Casey's, because they'll see the light.
Yeah. Or to Renee's, is, I think, they, they have nine trail cams watching what goes on up there, and she's had to chase many a person off and get us up at the last ears and.
When you say many a person, I mean, when I talked to Paul about it, and he owned it for fifteen years, he said twice, two times in fifteen years, he got a phone call about it.
From, from Renee?
Yeah.
I, I think.
I mean, it doesn't seem like it's a common occurrence. It's not something that happens a lot.
Changes hard.
I understand.
Yep, so.
I just wanted to follow, make sure we're following the ordinances that have been previously passed by other Board of Supervisors.
Thank you very much. You are the ball. So when, when Colin comes, we'll give that to him. Do you have anything else?
I, I do not.
Alright.
A few things, and some of my stuff really is towards, was already on the agenda with our discussions. I did, we didn't have Staples for Jett Golf Tournament on Saturday here in Madison. Yeah, that was a good turnout, thirty one eighteen.
That, yes.
Beautiful day for it.
For it, yeah.
My job was to sit on Level fifteen with a high powered rifle that shoots, launches golf balls, shoot a blank, and it has a little canister that goes on the end.
Cool.
For like ten bucks, we can shoot the rifle.
How close could you get?
Well, last year we did better. Last year we could dang near get it on the green. It would, wind around there. But this year, the wind was kind of in our face, so it's, you know that first and all. Great, you had fifteen right there. You shot it just right to get over that. So, I mean, it kind of, just one of those added fun deals.
Almost as far as like a hit a golf ball.
It's sort of been a waste of money for you.
Did it cost you a stroke too, or just money?
No, just money. And you could swing too, but when we did have the Robinson Brothers shoot at each other.
If you, since you were on fifteen, just so, point, point of history, but previous club champ, Rick Hanson, teeing off from the blue, which is, you know, farther than where the whites are, there's even a tee box behind that, hit a drive down to those telephone meetings. Rumor has it, anyway, that he did that in the men's club championship.
Oh.
That's a Tiger Woods type shot there. Pretty hot, a little gun, daily DNA in that.
Help you. That's what I'm good at, spreading the whole.
So, so good day, they had a good, good turnout. We're stable under construction, we speak.
I, August twenty ninth, I'm reading, making everything ready. I heard a caller, is that?
Do you ever take pictures of construction? Bring them to the Boardroom. I'd like to, if you got any of that on your phone. They, they, they have their Facebook page. They, Staples for Jett has their own page. Okay, alright, I'll find that. Thank you.
Then, I just had some correspondence with people that, within a minute domain, that we'll talk about here later, and Jean and I talked about the cop board a little bit. Email we got, that, so those are later down.
Just gonna have a discussion for.
Really all I got for you.
Very good. Should we get Colin started, going to get the report? Our.
What time do you have to be to court? I got there nine forty five.
Alright, give you time. Well, we have our agenda starting today at eight, so we, that's what our posted time to start was, and so we had our opening ceremony, and we reviewed the agenda, and we started out with our committees, and two got here, so I feel we can start, because it's posted that we started at eight o'clock, and people are start, do the interview, so. Do we want to wait till nine o'clock, or?
For what?
To have you start his.
No, that's why we put it on there like that, so I could start when he was able to come over.
So let's get started. Kyle is still waiting for the landfill to come, so we can do their cash count. That's the only one that we have left. So he said to start without him, but he'll be able to catch up. So if you wanted to get started, that would be fabulous, so keep getting moving.
Well, I don't have a PowerPoint.
Okay.
But it seems like probably better.
I didn't know what else to call it.
No, that's fine. I mean, my plan was to have a PowerPoint, but it just didn't happen that way. So, I was asked by the Board, you guys, today to come and kind of discuss what we've been discussing in terms of a pipeline ordinance in Crawford County. I thought the best way to do that would just to kind of be, kind of recap, overview recap of where we've been, and what we've done, and what we've considered, what you guys have considered, and what you guys have asked me to look into for your consideration. Going back to right before Shelby and Story passed their ordinance. I think Crawford County's been considering an ordinance for a long time. So, I would say, my, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe last fall, end of last summer, we started talking about getting an ordinance. The injunction against Shelby and Story happened December of twenty twenty three. And I know that we were in discussions about our own ordinance well before then. The exact date, I don't know. Or I don't recall. And so, we would need to discuss the feasibility, the legalities of having ordinance, what it would look like, what would have to be in it. What are the likely ramifications, like a lawsuit, and we did get a lawsuit, what the potential outcome? As fast as we could guess. Or surmise.
We lost the map with that Timothy.
We met with Tim Whipple.
Back in February or March of last year.
Was it that early?
That's what I think. I mean, it wasn't soon after I was, I started. I've been met with it.
Well, then we've been kicking the tires for a while. Yeah, so part of the process of what Crawford County did is we did meet with outside counsel, same counsel, Tim Whipple, at Story and Shelby, I believe, worked for those counties. And we inquired about what if Crawford County were to toss its hat in the ring? What would that look like? I remember there was a lot of discussion about Crawford County's specific soil type. Our soil is, is particular to Crawford, and we were, you guys were very worried about that, and whether or not that would give us an edge in an ordinance. I mean, we've been reading, keeping up with submissions to the I U B. I've been reading the code. I think you guys have been talking with other county supervisors as well, just to kind of get as much information as you guys could about an ordinance here in Crawford County. Well, Story and Shelby passed their ordinances. They cite heavily to Iowa Code Section three thirty five point five point three, and also three thirty one point three oh one, which is home rule. And so, a big part of their ordinances had to do with three thirty five point five, which comes straight from the code. Quote, the county has the responsibility to secure safety from fire, flood, panic, and other dangers. Protect general welfare. Facilitate adequate transportation of water, sewage, schools, parks, and other public environments. The stated purposes of Shelby and Story County's ordinances was the safety concern that the pipeline going through their counties would disrupt the safety of the county. And then thereby threaten their responsibility that they have to the people in that county to secure from flood, fire, panic, and other dangers. So they passed their ordinances. Summit sues them. This whole time we're meeting, we're talking, when they pass their ordinance, we meet, when Summit sues, we meet, and we're kind of keeping up to date on all those actions. So, in, well, Craig, I think your timeline is right, because in November of twenty two, the Board received a friendly letter from Frederickson and Byron Law Firm, who represented Summit Carbon. And I have that letter here somewhere, but suffice to say, they encouraged us not to explore and pass a ordinance because it's, it'd been on the agenda, it'd been part of public discussion, they knew we were considering one. They cite issues of preemption. And going back and reading their letter, a lot of their letter can be found, the same rationale can be found in the, in the rulings, the federal court rulings against Shelby and Story.
With the court found.
With the court, yeah, which would make sense, because they would be the ones arguing to the court, there'd be two sides. The court, in issuing the injunction, sided with the summit. So it would make sense if they adopted that same rationale. So the federal court issues an injunction in December of twenty three against the ordinances in Shelby and Story stops the ordinance from going into place on preemption grounds. Just briefly, they, the federal court decided that setbacks, safety, and safety is regulated by, regulated by the government, and thus, it is preempted. Yeah, the federal government. And one thing that was surprising for me to read, and then most recent I U B ruling granting the permit, was the I U B itself was very hesitant and tiptoed around the area's safety themselves, not to get preempted in their ruling. And their discussion of safety, they defer entirely to FIMSA. And their only comment on safety is that it can be a part of their consideration in granting the permit, not that they can install their own safety guidelines on top of Summit. So even the I U B was worried about being preempted in their ruling. And I think, Ty, I think you said it once, then, you know, FIMSA regulates the safety, all aspects of safety for the pipeline, and then the I U B, their only role was to determine whether or not Summit's plans met the FIMSA requirements, not that Summit was gonna put more safety on top of them. So setbacks are safety, safety is regulated by the fence. So, an important, I think the most important part of the federal court decision against Shelby and Story was the court's rationale. So yes, they, they did the injunction, and that was the ruling, but the rationale behind the ruling was a county ordinance could create a situation where the I U B may grant Summit a permit to start construction, but Summit is unable to do so. And then they write, quote, "Such a situation renders a local law irreconcilable with state law, and thus, unenforceable under preemption." So this is broad language, and this suggests to me that any ordinance that would create a situation that would render local law irreconcilable with state law would be preempted. Now, again, Shelby and Story stressed the purpose of their ordinance is a safety. So in the specific ruling, they ruled that, you know, safety is preempted, and is preempted because it causes conflict. But the rationale behind that ruling is the, the conflict, that I U B could review all the evidence, look at the state code, grant the permit, and then Summit would go to build in these counties and wouldn't be able to do so unless they jump through the local, the local ordinance. So, we kind of sit and ruminate on that for a while. So where do we go? But that really kind of put us back to the drawing board. So what do we do then? I mean, there was discussion about passing one anyway. There was discussion about, maybe there are areas that the Board could have an ordinance on, that's not with setbacks, that's not with safety, that wouldn't fall under the, the ruling and rationale of the federal injunction. And then we start talking about things like soil restoration. We start talking about things like economic development, community development. We start talking about I think decommissioning starts popping up around this time, and probably because these ordinances in Shelby and Story didn't have anything to say about decommissioning. So can we come and get in there and do? If we can't stop them ahead of time, we make sure when they pack up and leave, if that day comes, that the people of Crawford County are taken care of. Then enters into the consideration for the Board, Dickinson and Palo Alto. So they passed their own ordinances last year. They are more or less the same. The only difference is that Palo Alto passes a separate resolution staying their ordinance until final resolution in the courts. So they pass an ordinance, but then immediately put it on hold until it can work its way through the courses. And we even had a discussion about whether or not that would save, if Crawford County were to do something similar, have an ordinance on the books, but then pass the stay of that ordinance until final resolution of the courts, whether or not that would. But then pass the stay of that ordinance until final resolution of the courts, whether or not that would. Still prevent Summit from suing the county. Dickinson does not pass a state resolution. But they, what they do is Dickinson and Palo Alto, they pass their ordinances. And instead of stressing safety, their stated purpose is for economic development. And community development, their argument was that these pipelines would hinder both. And so we talk about that. We talk about, Gene brings me plans for. Economic development plans for Sledgewick and for Dennison. And I review those. The Dennison one, I think was more recent. And. Jeez, if I remember right, it showed. It showed a steady or slight decline in Dennis's population. Since it was created, I think, early two thousands, mid two thousands. But I think those of us who live there, live here can kind of see that with our own eyes. So. So then the board considers, well, what do we do? Can we have these economic plans? Can Crawford follow the steps of Dickinson and Palo Alto? And have this community and economic, economic development purpose to its ordinance? So. So we talked about that at length and. The rationale behind the injunction against Story and Shelby. You know, keeping that in mind with. Now, remember, an extra hoop at a county level could be irreconcilable with state law that's preempted. The hoop that Shelby and Story put up was safety related, the hoop that Palo Alto Dickinson is putting up. Is economic and community related. Is that hoop different enough? To withstand a lawsuit? Well, we don't know because it hasn't been challenged yet as far as I know and there's been no ruling on it, but. You know, it's an open question as far as it not being challenged in court. But does the rationale still apply? Now, as applied to Crawford County. If we would want to. Take that approach. You know, what, we would have to argue that the pipeline would hinder our economic development. And how do we do that? We talked about hiring an economist or some kind of. Rural economy expert. To kind of come in and talk about, or maybe find someone who, who. Has done studies on the impact of utilities going through communities and what that would do and what that has done. And whether or not that would adversely affect Crawford County. The I U B's decision. That they, to issue the permit, there's discussion about. Economic growth. Summit anticipates and estimates roughly one million dollars annually. I believe is the figure they put forward. Of economic windfall of the counties that have pipelines going through them.
Due to tax.
Yes, yeah, and I think they, well, that's a great question, Craig, because. All the interveners and challengers wanted the I U B to question. You know, how does Summit come up with their number? Summit doesn't actually say kind of where their number comes from and what goes into it, they kind of just toss it out there. And. All the challengers say, well, that's inadequate, you can't, you have to justify your number. But what the I U B said was essentially, yeah, maybe. But you guys are doing this. They, there's actually a line in there that says, the I U B finds it ironic that the challengers want us to question Summit's numbers. Without telling us how they came up with their numbers. And so whatever alternative has been put forth by the challengers to the permit on economic grounds. The I U B apparently wanted. Their numbers to back up that, like any alternative. Economic number. I U B didn't find that credible. The I U B just said, well, you want us to not believe Summit and their numbers, but you don't really tell us why. And when you tell us your economic forecast, you don't really tell us why you think it's going to be that way either. And so they essentially just say, we. Have little reason to doubt Summit on their number. They don't really tell us how they got it, but it's out there, so.
We had that conversation with the governor. I said, how many years ago, this Wayne Zink had given us a number and they had given us a number. They were pretty far apart.
Yeah.
Very interesting.
So as far as I U B and Summit is concerned, you know. The opposite is true, that there shouldn't be an adverse economic impact. It should be an economic boom or a windfall, some people.
Taxes would only be an economic impact to the county courthouse, that wouldn't be a development impact.
Yeah, and, and without them showing the math on their number, we don't know what's going into that number. I mean, could it be that they're going to have? You know, they're, they're going to do. Routine checks on the pipeline in every county, they're required to under FIMSA. I mean, are they talking about the gas these people are going to buy in the county they did to in front of the pipeline? Are they talking about going to Casey's to get a pizza for lunch? Like what?
Somebody moving here.
Maybe someone will be local, maybe they'll cover a couple counties and settle in Crawford County or.
It seems like you'd almost have to have. A commitment from, let's say, an Amazon shipping location that says, hey, we're going to Dennis and Iowa, we're going to create four hundred jobs.
Yep.
And then they write a letter, go, oh, you guys are having a pipeline go through your county, we don't want to go to Crawford County at all. We're going to a county that doesn't have a pipeline. And then it seems like you would have recourse, you'd have something that you could.
It'd be a good argument, yeah.
Then have a lawsuit possibly there, if you have something that says, we're not going to do this.
Right.
Because of your.
Yeah, because.
Without that hypothetical, what could be?
Right.
It's not a good argument.
Yeah, hypothetical.
Right, no, it's not, unless you have, you know, a really in-depth thorough economic. Forecast. Put forward, I mean, for Dennison. I mean, like before Tyson shut down, maybe, maybe. If Tyson would have cited the incoming pipeline as a reason to leave, then maybe there'd be. A good argument from the county that, hey, this is adversely impacting us. But the I U B also stresses that the summit has, I think it was twelve. Contracts with ethanol plants. To hook up to the pipeline and, and, and. Gather their excess ethanol or excess. C O two, thank you. And. And they have. I think they said they were going to reserve ten percent for what they call walk-up customers. So anyone who would happen to have some extra C O two, ten percent of the capacity is going to be on reserve at all times to kind of. Service, this is part of why they are found to be a public utility, because they are offering themselves public. They have contracts with, with companies that operate in the public, they have people who just walked up. I don't know who's walking around with a bunch of extra C O two, but if they're out there, ten percent is reserved for them.
Really?
Yeah.
That's some great information.
Well, isn't it argued because we're hooked up to continental carbonics? I mean, they've already got a use for some of that. With continental being across the street.
That's curable there.
Right.
And so, I mean, but the pipeline's going close to entering, so if they enter suddenly, the continental ever would not renew their contract.
Oh, then.
They could attach to the pipeline.
Got it.
Well, where is this ten percent that they're reserving to sell to me if I happen to need to go get somewhere, are they storing that? And how do I?
I mean.
How?
What do you mean by storing?
I'm sure it's in a plan submitted somewhere.
How, how do I get it? The hypothetical, the ten percent that they have.
Does it just go up in that cloud smoke and if you need it, it's like, whoa, whoa. It's in the cloud.
I guess the way I understood it was that they're never going to be at a hundred percent capacity running through the pipeline.
Okay.
So it's going to be at ninety percent, slightly add ten percent or whatever.
That was my gathering too, yeah.
How do you sell for these?
They don't have a C O two store out there that can.
Start bagging a little extra in some of my conversations for you.
That makes no sense to me. I'm sorry.
So, I mean, I, I can't, I mean, I have, so I sent you, I don't know if you guys had time to go over it.
I haven't.
And I don't blame you guys. So the I U B ruling, I'm getting in my head of myself a little bit. I think, no, this is a good part to do it at. So the I U B ruling was five hundred and seven pages. I went over it over this past week and weekend. And I pulled out a hundred and fifty pages that I thought had some interesting information and I highlighted those parts. And so when I sent it to you, it was a four-part PDF. It, it's a little murky jerky because it'll go from like page fourteen to page thirty-four and then from page sixty-five to seventy and then. But I just. It was either just do that or write it all down myself, and so I just figured I will print it and highlight it and then send it out. And that's where I'm getting this. Discussion of public utility and ten percent. And for me, I have the hundred and fifty pages in front of me now. But I didn't really bookmark anything.
It's a lot to digest and a lot to.
But it would be in the discussion of. It would be in the discussion of eminent domain because that's where they have to be a public utility. Okay, so eminent domain starts on page two, two. So the rationale about finding them a public utility, they write. The fact that Summit Carbon is providing a service to independent carbon dioxide emitters establishes the proposed hazardous liquid pipeline is not creating a. Closed loop system where only Summit Carbon benefits. And that was the, actually the subject of a Supreme Court case involving Mid-America that is the precedent. That the I U B used for eminent domain. Summit Carbon is providing a service indiscriminately to those who are carbon dioxide emitters. Summit Carbon is not proposing to build this project to transport the carbon dioxide it emits. Creating a closed-loop system at issue in Mid-America. Its business model is to provide a service to the public indiscriminately via three options, off-take agreements. Transportation service agreements and walk-up shippers. This is no different than a train selling cargo or passenger tickets prior to the time the train was leaving the station. So that is the rationale behind finding them a public utility.
That, no.
I can't find the ten percent number right now, but I know I read it.
After you read it. Did you agree with it?
Oh, I don't know if I really know enough to agree or disagree. I know this, that's the position told to the I U B by Summit. The Summit told the I U B, this is what, this is our business plan, this is our plan. Ten percent of it involve walk-up shippers. And the I U B. Didn't disagree. That'd be the best way to put it.
You know, some of these other things like the, down there in Jasper County, like the sustainable aviation fuel, that's not even. I mean, that's proposed at this point down there, but it isn't an induction yet, that would potentially be a walk-up customer.
Potentially. And either to the. Pipeline being there, they're going to be able to create this aviation fuel.
Will ten percent be enough?
That's a good question. I don't know.
Perspective, is that Jasper County? Plant, that's creating that, is that ten percent of the whole picture of the Summit Carbon solution captured? Is that one plant, they're ten percent that they're going to claim this ten percent to be used for? Being they're doing that, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know if they're going to have a little kiosk out here at the pumping station and you can put your credit card in and get a bag of C O two. I highly doubt it, but you know.
No, they won't be selling you C O two, they'll, they're buying your C O two. That's what Summit's business plan is. They're not, they're not dealing C O two, they're taking other people's C O two.
Oh.
Oh, see.
Plot tickets.
See?
See, you could have a little, out your little pallet or not behind your house, Gene, you can have a little C O two gap.
Okay. Okay.
So Colin, what's, when the I U B makes a decision. Is the next step if they appeal to the Iowa Supreme Court or, or what's the next avenue? That this, the Sierra Club or they say they're going to appeal, who do they appeal to?
That's, that's a great question and it's very tiny because the United States Supreme Court. Just made a ruling last week overturning what's called a Chevron deference.
I was going to ask you about that.
And the Chevron deference is, when it comes to federal agencies. Transportation, pick one. There was a ruling back in the Reagan administration that. There was a question about who gets to define what that agency is working with, like. Like, I mean, I guess the most generic example I could think of is. When it comes to the Department of Transportation, who gets to define what transportation is? Who gets to find what emissions are in the context of transportation? And then, and then it matters what things are defined as. Because when you go to regulate those things, you got to be clear about what you're talking about. So back then, the Reagan administration sued in one, and the Supreme Court ruled in Chevron. That it is the agency themselves that get to define. What it is they're working with. Anything that's in their house. They get to categorize what is in there and what that is and what it means. So that was overruled last week, which means that those federal agencies no longer have the power to define for themselves. What those things are.
What was it, what was the ruling?
Now it's the court. Right, now it's the court that decides.
You know, would the legislator have to go back and decide what, basically what regulatory agencies? I mean, would they have to define them?
I think what it means is that, the deference of the agency itself being the definer is gone.
Yeah.
And so where does the definition come from now? It could come from the executive branch, it could come from the legislative branch, it could come from intervenors and appealers. It could come from the courts, but that deference to the agency itself is gone. So, the I U B is an administrative agency, just like nationally. The Department of Transportation is administrative agency, so does that decision now trickle down to the I U B? And they made a lot of findings in there. And, and they have a lot of authority right now to make those findings under the code. And so as far as the appeal process, where do they go next? Before last week, I would, I, I'm not intimately familiar with I U B processes, but I do know from researching other areas of the I U B. That all the appeals kind of went through them. There is a provision in Administrative Code one ninety-nine that if. If landowners aren't happy with part of the plan of Summit. The remedy is that the board of that county. Issues, files a petition with the I U B on behalf of that landowner. And then the I U B decides whether or not that petition goes through. And even if they grant the petition, it doesn't mean that they would grant in favor of the petitioner, it just means they can screen it, say, no, we're not going to hear this. Or they could say, okay, petition is granted, we'll hear it, and then they hear all the evidence and then still decide against the. Or they could say, okay, petition is granted, we'll hear it, and then they hear all the evidence and then still decide against the petitioner. And so it would seem like the I U, I mean, first of all, I'll say, I don't know, but it seems like. People who are unhappy with the decision. Would probably have to exhaust or administrative, whatever administrative remedies are available to them through the I U B. And if they exhaust all those remedies, then they can go to the courts. That's typically how it's done with administrative agencies.
But like most of the I U B's authorities, up to this point, what we're looking at is what they've, what they've inherited through the code. So that would be delegated by the legislature, correct?
Correct. Yes. And reading the decision, I mean, that's exactly what the I U B did. They essentially said, in order for us to grant a pipeline, these are the ten Iowa code sections that have to be satisfied. And they just hit them one right after another, ding, 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 ding. Uh, they were just checking statutory boxes. All the way down the line. Okay, so back to Dickinson, Palo Alto, and economics and community development. Is that chain going to be enough to survive in the courts? Unknown, to be decided. So. After Shelby and Story, after Dickinson and Palo Alto, the board met and discussed what's left. If it's not going to be safety, it's not going to be economic and community development, what can we do? We kick the tires on soil restoration ordinances, decommissioning ordinances, and uh. Requiring pipeline companies to train and equip first responders and the people in the county who have to deal with any potential ruptures. There was a proposed ordinance that did all three. Uh, the board. Gave direction to separate out soil restoration and just work on that one and have a standalone soil restoration. So again, uh, if. If the pipeline can't be prevented due to preemption, what can the county do otherwise? And again, we, uh, the board explored this idea that on the way out, let's make sure that the people of Crawford County are no worse off. They're the same as before the pipeline came. Yeah.
You made a comment there. I don't know that we ever, I don't know, my, my theory was ever to stop the pipeline. Why we wanted these ordinance, we just didn't want them to miss any details that would influence our people.
Sure.
That would be the better way to word it.
Yeah, no, you're right about that.
I don't want, I don't, I sure don't want it to be that we were anti-pipeline, we were, we were, we were trying to look after the welfare.
Yes.
To use that word, the welfare of the citizens in our properties and, you know, I mean, the county soils. I think that's probably the best way to.
Yeah, thank you for, for, I, I only said it that way because, I mean, that's what these Shelby, Dickinson, Palo Alto, that's what these ordinances were doing, they were, they were, they were. I mean, I, I don't want to speak for these counties, of course, but uh. You know, Summit viewed them as uh potential stoppers of coming into the county. I'm sure the counties would say, much like Ty just said, no, 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 if you're going to come here, you gotta do it under these guidelines. We're not gonna, you, you're more than welcome to come to our county if you can satisfy all these rules. Uh, so much to Ty's point, uh, Crawford County was exploring the same. So. Soil restoration. Uh, is covered entirely under Iowa Administrative Code one ninety-nine. And so we had a discussion again. It's law on the books, it's already regulated by the state. Is it going to be preempted? Is it going to have any effect at all? Is it going to be subject to a suit? And then, and if so, is it going to be shot out on preemption grounds? And then it's, oh, go ahead.
All the stuff you showed us in one ninety-nine showed us that they could shoot us down due to preemptions.
And then that's what I was referencing earlier about the internal I U B processes for appealing and stuff like that, that all came from one ninety-nine. And uh. And the remedies under, for landowners under one ninety-nine who are unhappy with the soil restoration. Uh, would be to come to you guys, then you guys petition I U B and they decide whether or not to grant your petition. And then if, even if they grant hearing your petition, they would decide whether or not petition should be sustained or denied. And so. And re-reading this uh five hundred-page I U B decision. There was a discussion about equipment uh in the decision about how Summit has pledged CO2 monitors for, to be in every first responder's vehicle or everyone should have access to it that. Be potentially a person dealing with the pipeline, uh, they're mandated under the federal guidelines to do trainings on a, I think, a yearly basis. Uh, with local first responders, uh, and there's discussion on decommissioning. And there's remedy for uh. A landowner on decommissioning. Now they make a special note here. Someone, it was probably Summit, made the argument on decommissioning that traditional practice and historical preference. For pipeline cup, pipelines, uh, not just hazardous liquid pipelines, but any pipeline would be to just abandon in place, is what they call it. Because I guess the presumption is enough time has gone by that whatever they backfilled after the initial dig, they put the pipeline in the ground. Whatever had been put on top of it had been so incorporated in that land over the last twenty years or however long the pipeline was, was in uh use. That to disrupt and disturb the earth a second time to dig it up, remove it, and then put more soil on top of it is. According to I U B, uh, traditionally not the way to go. Traditionally, they just abandon it in place, it's four to six feet underground, the soil on top of it now, just leave it. Although they do reference that landowners can require, uh, I think it's. There's a section. That if requested, the landowner can require something to dig it up, and that's in the code.
Could be in their personal contract.
Not just in the personal contract, it's in the state code that they can require, yeah.
So if they decommission it, then property tax stops and so the landowner's not stuck paying uh property tax on it, similar to what we had, the problem we had with uh wind turbines. If they decommissioned them and left them up, Dewayne's still going to want tax off that.
Right, well, that's, that's a good question. I think that's the difference between decommissioning and disowning. So if they just decommission it, but still own the pipeline, then they would have to pay taxes on it. I believe, I mean.
Well.
This is an area of law, it's kind of at the outskirts of, of.
Those are the concerns of those people, especially the ones who have had it shut down to their throats, that now they're leaving it, now you're stuck to pay. Uh, because, you know, so I think that when we start to talk about this soil restoration, our big questions were, how long do they have to make it right? You know, what's the actual penalties on it? And I think we wanted to follow up and, and firm that up a little bit. And not have this unknown of how long do we have to wait for them to, to uh come back and make it right or, you know.
I've not seen a contract between Summit and an individual landowner, but will that be spelled out in your contract?
It could be.
I know they're all different, but I mean, if it was me, I would sure want to.
I, I think there's discussions.
To me and be correct, but that's the other problem that with, what, what do we have? How many different ones out there? The very first ones are completely different than the one that your dad probably has, because he really took some thought into what he needed in there. And so part of our job, I think, is to make sure that even the ones that didn't have the benefit of another attorney, that, you know. We just, I think it's just important for our people to make sure that we don't have too far a house.
And that's been the overarching discussion and, and emphasis by the board since back years ago, that we started this discussion. The I U B. Will always, well, in their decision, they always defaulted back to the requirements of the Iowa code and whether or not Summit satisfied those requirements. So according to the I U B, the decommissioning plan is satisfactorily either accounted for in the private contract because they can, they can contract that in their easement. Or if nothing else, uh, Iowa code allows the landowner to require the pipeline to be done.
So that seems to be okay, that if it turns out that they would end up having to pay the tax on it, then they can require that they come dig it up. Once again, what we have though is when are they coming to dig it up? There's no timeline that we've ever talked about. So they say, yeah, 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 I'm gonna come, but for two years, you're stuck paying for it because they're dragging their feet, because there's no, nothing in place to say within X amount of months, they will come and take care of that. It could be ten years that they're stuck because I've never seen where it says how long they have to make it all right. That's the part I don't like.
So, again, this is not my area of expertise in the law, but with. Petitions to, to the I U B, I would consider them civil petitions. And civil petitions have statutes of limitations on what they can be filed. So uh depending on what it is, it could be a year or two. So I think if you wait ten years. After an official announcement that we're, by Summit, that we're done with this pipeline and we're abandoning it, it's gone, we're gone. You know, waiting ten years for them to come back, I'm not, again, I always have to say this, I'm not giving anyone legal advice and I would encourage any landowner who is affected to seek their own counsel.
I agree.
And not rely on what I'm saying here, because again, it's not my area of expertise.
I agree.
But sitting on your rights as a landowner is never advisable. You would want to, uh, within a reasonable amount of time. Get something going with that, at the very minimum, get something going with the I U B.
And that's going to cost money, because you're going to need to get an attorney and uh it's just going to be, and once again. The folks that have their property taken by eminent domain had no contract with them. And so what protection do they have that they're the last ones to be taken care of because their property was stolen from them? Just saying.
See.
Because now what we officially were waiting wouldn't happen has happened, so now we have a whole new set of things that we need to be concerned about for our landowners who are still not around it. So we kind of skip down to another discussion, but.
Well, my next bullet point was going to be on eminent domain and.
Should we skip to that?
Yes, but it's the last point I have, so. Again, whether or not eminent domain can be granted depends on whether or not the pipeline can be considered a public utility. That is defined off at case law and statutorily driven. The I U B identified all the statutes, as I said earlier, that must be satisfied, they found in favor of Summit. But not, they found in favor of Summit in, as far as granting them the permit and granting them the power of eminent domain. But it should be noted that the I U B didn't give Summit everything they asked for. There are specific points in the ruling where intervening parties would say. Well, there was one um about having a, I think they call it the pig.
The launcher.
The launcher was going to be, um, and, and again. This may not be a hundred percent accurate, but there was going to be a big portion of their. Farmland can be occupied by this receiver and they asked the I U B at the very minimum, can you just put it? There's a road or a, just put it on the other side, because I don't farm over there. And it's, for, for Summit, it's a difference of thirty feet, sixty feet, but for me, it's going to occupy so much of my farmland, it's going to make it unusable. And Summit found that to be persuasive and said, we will grant Summit a pathway through, but they're going to have to. Kind of reroute themselves away from impacting this farmland and just put the receiver on the other side of the street. And there are other instances too where. The I U B, even though they do grant the permit, they don't grant Summit everything that Summit asks for. Right, so. Craig, I think you asked last time about eminent domain and where they go from here, and I was rereading that again this weekend and also this morning. And of course, I'd want more time with it, but it seems like this ruling. Granted them. It didn't. I don't think there's going to be uh additional procedures that Summit's going to have to go through to get eminent domain over those remaining parcels.
That's what I read also. They, they didn't grant it on maybe nine, I think, is what I read, nine parcels. With instances like you just mentioned about moving it.
Yeah.
Here to there.
Yeah. Uh, but they, they addressed each parcel individually is what they did, so they didn't just say, you know, carte blanche. Summit, wherever you want to go, you can go now, if you think you need to be there. They took each parcel and the concerns attached to each parcel and decided whether or not they would grant eminent domain and under what conditions.
That's part of that pipeline.
That's part, yeah, and it's also part of the one fifty that I kind of sectioned out.
Somebody just sent me an email that says eminent domain easements will have no special conditions, also this easement is forever, there's no decommissioning wording in the easement. Summit will never abandon it, they will sell it to someone else for another use. So that's just kind of, somebody that I believe is in eminent domain. So.
It'd have to be what other use that pipeline can do.
Yeah, well, this is, you know, this is just.
It would be in the language easily. I mean, they can, they can buy it potentially.
Who was that?
From, from the land or.
I just have a phone number, so I don't know who it is, I, I don't.
Like ten o'clock.
Just have a phone number, just like, that's probably one of those up there.
Yeah.
I tried to explain this one.
Yeah, we don't know who those people are.
It's been read on the.
I do not have any, just have a phone number.
Can you ask?
He thought we approved the whole campaign. No.
You don't give it a lot of consideration.
And even.
Well, I learned. I doubt they would have a problem managing their.
Colin, just so, just for the board, I, I did find on page two fifty-five, just a short paragraph, just says, in his rebuttal testimony, Mr. Peroli. Justifies Summit Carbon, quote, actively holds itself out as willing to carry carbon dioxide for anyone who is able to provide carbon dioxide in line with specifications. And who is interested in its standard contract, Summit Carbon, uh. Quote, will be conducting what is known as an open season to solicit interested shippers and that it will be reserving ten percent of the pipeline capacity for walk-up shippers. So you did read that correctly, that's just where it is. Then he defines walk-up shippers to mean persons who are not seeking a long-term contract for the shipment of carbon dioxide.
Good fine, that's it, that's where I read it.
I'd like to see his search engine.
It's a reason why I ordered out to become a lawyer. Your son wants you to be your.
His researcher.
Doesn't work, you can find. So I guess what I'm down to is can we do anything to help protect from the county part of it? In the eminent domain and as far as uh restoration timelines, because it's very vague and there isn't any, can the county do anything like that? To help?
Well, I'd like to go back and reread the portion of the I U B ruling that talks about uh the decommissioning and talks about. The code section that covers decommissioning. I think. Whatever the county may want to do. I think, keeping in mind the rationale from the injunction from federal courts, uh, it would happen. And that rationale would be, well, it would, it would be up to the board to decide. You know, whether or not an ordinance that gets put in place. Is going to throw up and create a situation where the ordinance will prevent Summit from building. I think anything that would require extra approval on the county level. At least from that, the federal court ruling, seeing the rationale is any extra move at the local level creates an issue of preemption, so what can the county do? I, I'm not in a position right now to, to say. But when you ask about soil restoration timelines, I mean, they're, I explore it, is what I can tell you, Gene.
Thank you.
I mean, because Iowa code one ninety-nine, I mean, if it's not addressed in that code or not addressed anywhere in Iowa code.
or not addressed anywhere in Iowa Code, then it's, seems like then it's something that we can address at a county level.
Yes.
And do we, have you read all the way through the Code 199 and know exactly what that? I know it's, it's extremely large and I didn't, I was, I was only just trying to find out when it was passed. I'm assuming it was, it's been passed very recently, but I can't find what year it was passed. Because I would just think the issue of the pipeline hasn't been something 20 years ago they would have passed. But I couldn't find that.
And even when it was passed, I mean, it's continually updated. So they would have updated it for other years anyway.
Okay.
Which Craig, I think brought us to where we are, where we've looked at how many different angles are unique situation of how we could try to do something and every time we run into, it's all recovered.
Right. And that's why I, I said before, that it'd be nice, because I don't think when Summit has their, they have a soil restoration plan that they presented to us, I think that they showed to us, they got emailed out to all of us. Like I said, it'd be nice to put that in an ordinance just to have teeth on it.
Correct.
So that we hold Summit to the fire. What do we have to hold them to what they say they're gonna do?
And timeline.
And if in that stuff that they sent to us, do they state a timeline in there? Or what they would do for decommission or what they would do if it was?
Yeah, and I think that's all we're trying to do is hold their feet to the fire of what they said they would do in all areas that, you know, because everything's changed from the time that they walked in and they even admitted early on, there maybe weren't some great players and there might've been some half truths going out there. And I think we're just trying to hold their feet to the fire for the things they've said they would do. How can you sue somebody for just saying, well, you said you would do this and we, you know, wanna make sure that you understand. Crawford County expects you to hold up to it.
So they had to submit soil restoration plans to the I U B for the permitting process too. And I, I called it exhibit one when it first came up, but it's actually an I, a little bit of Sam to me. And I sent exhibit I to you guys over the weekend. And so they have submitted a plan for soil restoration as part of their permitting process. And so as far as what Crawford can do, so home rule under the code, so a county may exercise any power and perform any function it deems appropriate to protect and preserve the rights, privileges and property of the county or of its residents and to preserve and improve the peace, safety, health, welfare, comfort and convenience of its residents. That's 331.301. And they can do all that except as it is limited by the Iowa Constitution and if not inconsistent with the laws of the General Assembly. So the laws of the General Assembly are what the I U B used to grant the permit. So you're absolutely right, Craig and Gene. The, the the playing field for the county as far as what it may, might be able to do in an ordinance would have to be something that's not directly touched on by the General Assembly. That would, home rule does not trump the Iowa Code.
Can I say, I'd like to make a point. I mean, I thought through this whole process, why we were exploring ordinances was to ensure that no, no areas got missed in protecting our county, not to stop the pipeline per se. Like appears some of these ordinance sources were designed to do outside of here. And what we've discovered, because even 199, we weren't even all, all that well aware of all of its preeminence prior to this, prior to looking into soil restorations. So I mean, it looks to me like on the federal and the state level, there's a lot of things that are covered. Are they perfectly covered? We're really not even sure of that yet. We're still, you know, there's still, there's still some gray out there. It seems like every regulation or, or code comes down, it might have a little bit of gray. We've found that over and after again. But for the most part, I think our people are pretty well protected as long as they didn't leave themselves hanging wide open in their private contracts with Summit. Would everybody agree with that, kind of? I mean, I.
I think that's a fair statement. And we even had discussion and concern of what ordinance to protect the county. We even have legitimate concern over because county ground or privately owned ground is, I mean, we could write an ordinance, but if it's on private property, do we have any teeth to even, any force of? Man, if it came through our county farm, our county ordinance.
Or anywhere conservation ground, sure.
Obviously, but I imagine it would be contested, could be contested in court, but I don't care what your ordinance says, it's my property.
And even, and, and if you remember, we talked with Paul one time and even like our easement ground on the roadways, the farmer's owned to the middle of the road. We're just having easement with them. You know, and I actually tried to explain that to a TV station this past week, you know, and they, they thought we approved it for the whole county. And I said, no, everybody's got their own, each farmer has their own contract with Summit. Now, we, we go over, we grant within our right of way, I guess you could say, on the roads and then on the county properties. But we haven't even done that.
That's where Paul was toward.
Yeah, exactly.
Granting permission to go through ex-landowners that is against.
Yeah.
To get across the road.
Exactly.
How do I permit that?
And then there's also, the county zoning rules under chapter 335 prevent local ordinances from impacting grounds that are primarily used for agricultural purposes.
There you go. I remember that level, right?
I remember that sentence. But I think, I think Time makes a good point. I mean, we have to remember that 87, they do have 87% approval through Crawford County.
I just hope them contracts are solid and we don't have some people getting.
And I don't know how we as a county government can do anything when it's between a private landowner and a private company.
Buyer beware.
We have any jurisdiction whatsoever.
The old adage, buyer beware at that point, you know, but it doesn't mean that I don't worry about them, but I mean, yes, it does.
Exactly.
It does kind of leave us out of the equation as far as this board.
That all being said, one of the reasons that we've got several different things on here is, is there anything we can do for the, for the individuals that are gonna be impacted by this ruling of the eminent domain that we, you know, for all this time kept thinking, well, maybe they won't, you know, deem it for public purpose. And now we know that they have. So I think the time is right for us to start helping to protect the folks that are gonna be impacted by the eminent domain. That's my reason.
I don't know if that's our responsibility to help protect them. That's what we're supposed to do.
Right, and our mission supervisors serve for the safety of.
I mean, because they lost the lawsuit, we're supposed to help.
Uh, I don't look at it like that, but we can.
We could, we could look into what we can do to, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
It's a new territory for us. That's the, the issue here. We've never been handed this again.
We, we sent a letter to I U B, and I was even part of him being on the board, that this board was against the use of granting eminent domain. So we're on record as stating we do not approve of that. They did it. So what's left?
That is the one common thread today. In fact, this morning, as I was walking to Public Health, Ted Leecey was on the street. This is typical conversation of what people may grab me and want to talk about. They're not necessarily against the pipeline, however, they are against eminent domain. And we did put that in our submission and even this morning, Teddy said, even if it's only symbolic and it doesn't have teeth and we sure appreciate that the county approved and submitted something like that to say that you are against having to, to make the noise, at least if it's just even noise, that we don't agree.
And you know, that's a great point, Dave, but we don't know how many hoops that made them jump through to make sure that they were trying to satisfy our concerns. We don't, I mean.
And I know we had talked about, no, it's great, but we talked a few meetings ago or a while back about passing something similar to it. Was it Shelby that did a?
There's a bunch of counties that have passed it now.
That basically would restate that we are not in favor of eminent domain again. Whether we, I know at the time we said that we already did that.
Well, there's counties that are passing resolutions stating that they are against.
Shelby Wright, Mitchell, Lloyd, Duncan.
But I do think, I don't have anybody come to me and say, don't do that. At least make something like we did already public that our county is, is against eminent domain.
Now it's time to speak out against eminent domain abuse.
Now I say, we kind of already.
I mean, we've spoken out against eminent domain. You can't call it abuse when the Iowa Utilities Board granted it. I mean, they're the authority as to whether or not to grant eminent domain and they said yes. So how can you say that that's abuse when they're the ones that rule on it and they ruled?
It's just in my nature to category.
It, it doesn't matter. I could hold a quarter up and you could say, that is a nickel. It doesn't matter what you think, Gene. This is a quarter. You could say it's a nickel and dime and fifty cents, it's a quarter. That's it. It's a quarter. It is what it is.
Just a little bit more than 50 cents.
Well, I understand. I'm just using that as an example. One of us on this board that are happy with the granting of eminent domain. I, I agree. I'm, I'm not in favor of it either. I don't know why they can't, I don't see why a pipeline has to go in a straight line. Why it can't go around somebody who doesn't, who doesn't agree that just go around.
Why not go around Tim's place?
But that's not what was, that's not what's happening. So we have to deal with what happened, legal truth. To deal with truth.
There's always two sides to the story and not.
There is, but there's one that legally won, whether you don't like it, that's one thing.
That's what, you know, you have a defense attorney.
Even in the granting of the ruling, they wounded.
You know, that might have been a better approach for like, for Representative Holt is if you've got 85% in order to get any type of finished product in that county, find your way around these absolute nodes. I don't know, maybe that would have been better than you could have eminent domain after.
That would have been.
I mean, just seems like they, they would have been able to accomplish their mission. And we would have, you know, once again, it would have been in the negotiation stuff with, but I mean, I still don't know, you know, how much that would create in other counties, you know, but if you, if, if you had many, I don't know, that's, I'm just thinking out loud, sorry.
Right. Well, it's just, I mean, Navigator, they proclaimed when they came that they were gonna do no eminent domain pipeline.
And look what it did to them.
And they're not around. You know, so Summit, I guess, could have claimed that and on good faith went out and said, hey, we're not gonna do eminent domain, but they went the other route. They won. Today, I should say.
Today.
But I know Colin said he had to 9:45, so.
Okay, well.
Thanks for coming in.
May not realize what that is, 9:45.
Summary?
Summary.
Yeah. But no, time to, to reiterate your point, yeah, I mean, I, I misspoke when I'm discussing stopping and I was never, it was all about what regulation can the county put on to ensure the safety of citizens at a local level that's not represented?
I just wanted to make sure there was no space or loops anywhere for people to dive through that could create a problem. I think that was safe for us.
You wanna come up to the boardroom?
So the counties today that are passing a resolution saying they do not agree with eminent domain.
That's what I sent you.
You know, I couldn't.
Oh.
Well, we didn't keep researching, I don't know.
Yeah, I'll keep kicking the tires on it.
I'll send you this and see if.
Yeah.
I mean, it passed a resolution for the, that we're not, that we're opposing.
Reiterating in a different form.
It'd be like, yeah.
I mean, but it's more of a political statement than it is a fact that, than it, than it is a. I mean, if it would be something simple, like you said, murder, that letter may have made them look at other things. So many people. So if you do these resolutions all across this state, maybe it'll make them look at other. Even if that is a case in the future.
Right. Yeah, I think I U B's done a little bit of stuff in this case.
Yeah, they made their ruling.
Yeah, send me whatever you want me to review and I will review.
But you know, they're still in there. They still have to recruit each individual parcel.
Well, they did. They did that in the ruling. They, they addressed each parcel in turn, concerns, pros and cons, and then granted. They, so the ruling did grant the eminent domain as a whole, but they did it one at a time, each, each parcel at a time. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Was each landowner then notified, you think?
Yeah, there's, there's notification requirements.
By, by I U B?
By Summit.
By Summit, yeah.
And that's discussed in the ruling too, is whether or not Crawford noticed it was given out to everybody. And there was, I forget what state rep went in front of the I U B, but they made a due process argument saying that these landowners are, the I U B should be fielding as much information from as much, many voices as possible. And so kind of freezing them out of the process is removing due process from those individuals. And the I U B, as such, a rule, you know, we've had this many public hearings, we've reviewed this many documents, we've dedicated this many hours, we've done this many, heard this many witnesses. They consider that satisfactory starts as far as due process, due process protections.
A foregit.
Yeah, whatever you want to look at.
All right. If you can't open it, let me know because I sent it to David.
Hopefully that too. The summary will actually help people understand what we've been doing, what we've tried to do.
They never.
Right. Oh, no, we've, we've kicked the tires on pretty much anything and everything that is in the realm of feasibility in terms of regulating at the local level, the pipeline.
We have.
And we've, we've taken into account what other counties have been doing. We've taken into account the federal rulings on those ordinances. We've considered what, what other counties kind of zigged. We have considered their pivots on whether or not it'd be appropriate for Crawford County.
We've explored our own.
You've explored, yeah. Yeah.
I mean, we're not just ballroom, other county. We're, we just keep finding state or federal regulations that's already been addressed, everything that we've tried.
That's an excellent point, Cal. We, we talked about economic development almost immediately.
Right.
And how that would affect, and especially out in the western part of this city here. Because that's where most of our development events, or you're right, we, we, before anybody else had even started down that road, that was actually one of our first priorities. I mean, obviously, safety was a concern before we knew that FENSA basically had us covered the early stage.
And I think we gave everything a very fair look and it looked like we looked at it with narrow lenses. I mean, we, like when the economy developed, we looked at both sides of where there was a plus or a minus.
Right.
Worse way.
Never give up.
And I think we can, like Gene just said, I think we keep our eyes open if there's something that we think that could happen.
If there's something that's beneficial to our.
Well, one of them loopholes opens up, we can shut it.
Never give up.
To protect the folks or their properties. I mean, I think you just keep looking at, that's our jobs to continuously look at for the people, whether it's a pipeline or whatever.
Well, I gotta roll, guys. Thank you for your time.
All right, so now we have Paul.
I did not realize, my meeting was moved to Monday. No, I, I just, I didn't even look at the date on any of it. I just had my regular agenda. I have to be there tomorrow.
I guess I should have called you.
I.
Once a year.
I didn't know. Yeah, it makes all sense in the world. Yeah, I just didn't know. But we'll table the two items until next Tuesday and talk to Amy and she said, well, I, I was gonna try to do it tomorrow. She said, well, it, it could be done. It'd still be okay if it was done next Tuesday.
Okay.
So anyhow, yeah, as far as other updates, the project done E16, where people are trying to get around the level B roads. It's no good way around, mostly up there. Also, we're gonna throw up a few road closed signs here and there on the level B roads, try to keep off of those, especially when it rains. So that project is ongoing for the next several months.
Supposed to get some heavy rain, something like that.
We are, I know, yeah. And then like I mentioned on the, pardon me.
This afternoon, when is that coming in?
I think today, you know, later, later this afternoon. I think today, you know, later later this afternoon and in through tomorrow, there's potential.
June tomorrow.
You know. Uh we're just, we're getting, we're actually getting more normal weather here. I mean, unfortunately, some people are getting
Yeah.
Heavy rains and some people aren't getting any. We're, this is probably pretty much normal. What we're seeing uh here.
That's just in the down porters that have made up the roads. It's been a proud time on the roads.
They need work, especially now with the gravel haul and the gravel haul will probably wrap up. We had a full week this week. We'd rather, we would wrap the gravel haul up.
Holy God.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Have you ever been done that since?
No, no, it's a record. It's a it's a record. And we probably didn't have quite enough gravel, so we're gonna have to pull out of some of our stockpiles to finish it up. So. But yeah, it's. The order was a little short. Yeah.
I mean, we had really good winters, you know, you.
I didn't know. It's kind of like trying to order salt. You know, next year I'm gonna bump it up quite a bit because then we can add it in the stockpile. You just don't know.
He's leaving out setting the bar up high for.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we, yeah, we ordered a hundred and forty-five, a hundred and fifty thousand ton that one year. And so, you know, now now we're down to a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty because of the good winters that we've had. Uh but it is taking a little more because we've had spring rains after, you know, after that. So let's go. Absolutely fantastic. The elders are like a tough on the page too. They need some work. Yeah, yeah. As I said, this is more normal. We've had four or five years where we haven't had to deal with a lot of that stuff.
We're blowing them out of the water.
Highway thirty-nine, if you haven't been on that, that's turned out really nice. I think they're very close to being, I think all the asphalt's done. They're just doing a shoulder right now. So. And so that project's going real well. The metal shop, it's just a few little things. And they're just, for all practical purposes, wrap it up on that. Soon we're gonna start the concrete week today. If you're a couple of weeks ahead, then we should be pretty much done down there. So great place to have a little summer safety.
There we go.
Slash lunch and so we'll see how that. Maybe we'll get some sweet corn and do do it up right, you know. So uh so yeah, that's that's going real well. If you haven't got to the bridge by West Side, go take a look at it sometime. If you get over that way, that bridge turned out really, really nice. You know, and you look at it and you think, well, this just serves two people. This is a really nice bridge. Um but.
That was why you got there.
We we got it because it was the most economical solution for that.
Yeah.
But it it looks like the Cadillac version of what we build. It just turned out great. So. And the bridge crew's working just over here on Indian Avenue. We're gonna put a structural plate in uh over there. And they're 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 working on that right now. So that'll be nice, just eliminate a bridge, put a structural plate. So that'll be good. Three bridges actually this year that will be coming out, replacement pipes. So that eliminates the bridge inspection requirement with requirements, weight restrictions, all kinds of good things. Those are good projects to do. And then, you know, we did the one over by Tom Ludwig's, did one by Hotlaced, where we took the truss out, put it some steel beams right up here at Vernon Boss Road. You go up to the Y and continue to go to the left. There's a truss right there that we're gonna pull out next year. And put in some steel beams there. It's like sixty feet long. So we're adding some used ones from Dixon um to to put in there. That'd be, I mean, that's just a great, you know, the abutments, they're not gonna probably last forever, obviously. They're they're in great shape. I mean, they might last another thirty or forty years. If they do start to fail you, just pop the steel beams back out, dig everything out, put in our standard abutment. Get the concrete out and set it back down. So it's kind of a nice way to deal with that.
It's easy.
Yeah. Mowing and spraying. Probably gonna have to put a new spray truck in the twenty-six budget for the roadside because it's starting to show its age. I think I mentioned it maybe to you, but you know.
The driver, what do you draw?
But anyhow, it's twenty, it'll be twenty-five years old by then. Spray equipment, you guys that deal with spray equipment know that's pretty darn good to get that.
Without a major expensive rehabilitation process.
You just can't find parts now.
You'd have to totally rehabilitate.
Totally rebuild it, then you just will start with.
So get your technology.
Somebody else. Yeah, yeah. Well, exactly. I mean, it it has some utility to somebody, but it's just getting to the point where, you know, when you really need it, you don't want your combine broke down in the larks. Perfect. And so, um but yeah, we got that. The you the Iowa Flood Center webpage, and I mentioned that in our key news meeting, I sent that link out to y'all. That's super neat stuff. If you get a chance, go on there.
I have.
And you can take the river stages and you can find places where they'll tell you what the actual river stage was, what it what it had peaked at. Shows the inundation in certain cities. It's pretty really, it is really valuable stuff.
Thank you for saying.
And I hope at some point we can get something like that for the Dennison area, you know, because they only have the inundation maps or certain communities so far. And I think it's just something that they'll continue to kind of work on. Um but I'll be advocating to try to get Dennison done as well or the Crawford County area. So you can take a look at what the Boyer River stages are and how they might impact that. I mentioned it to Tim Berry too, but I'll follow up with the the city, but you know, it's it's really good information for city of Dennison. We may.
Yeah.
Actually got asked some people that I pre-contacted pre that summit I went to. They actually asked because of the floodings, kind of not a secret right now that we're having flood in Iowa. They actually asked. So how often do you, you know, that kind of information would have been nice to have to be able to present.
Well, yeah, so so like Spencer, for instance, you could take anybody, anybody could pull up that website and they could take a look at river stages, see what the river stages are and understand, you know, what's gonna happen. The unfortunate thing there is it happens so quickly that, you know, in the evening, they didn't have much time and people maybe didn't even know, you know. Last thing they're thinking of is, hey, let's go see what's happening on the webpage. You know, they're just trying to figure out how to protect their assets. But it's really important, I think, for emergency managers to understand that there's some really good information and that that they're gonna continue to build on, really good information. That.
Well, you know, all of us, even all of our tributaries in this county, it'd be nice to have that kind of.
Well, you know, like Smithfield Foods, for instance, you know, I mean, they could look at that. They they you could, they're watching that all the time. They could be watching that. They could make the decision.
They sent them all last week.
On their own. Yeah, yeah. So, you know.
People forget that we may not be experiencing here, but that is affecting our drainage ability to the the rivers over there.
Well, yeah, like Cherokee didn't get the rain, but Cherokee flooded because of the river.
We had a major drain here. The water can't get out of the Buoyer into the Missouri as fast. So it's gonna pack it up. So it potentially is impacting us.
Yeah, it's it's all, it's all connected. So.
You know, Cherokee, they've got rid of the water, but people within the county are really suffering the long-term effects of it because we can't get away.
And if we get a heavy rain, guess what? It's out of the bank.
And we're not, it was in ninety-three, it was July eighth and ninth. Another thing on the towers, uh the new tower site. So I was at a couple of them. One of them looks really good. The one in Dallas City, you know, mowing and spraying, it's gonna be hard for us to be in there. Are you, are you, you know, with a big spray rig? I mean, what what's the plan for that?
Well, we, we, in fact, our the grass isn't even taking.
The no grapes.
On the forest, on the on the what would be the west side. Yeah, you you'll you'll have trouble getting in with that big stack up here.
Get any of that stuff. And I was just gonna recommend you to hire some local.
Well, we 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 hired that. Some of that stuff. So maybe a little bit of survival.
And just see if they could go, because they have basically.
We have to visit with that a lot this spring.
I I know, but the motors, that site. Vanilla looks great here because I think the land is kind of mowing around there and the inside is just, but you know, really what you do is you just spray, you know, some sort of sterilant.
We do have, we do have our road control. They're actually taking care of the weed inside. We got a contract with them to do road control and the weed control insights.
They sterilize the rock portion of that. Yeah, I think, yeah, you spray around upon the rock or some sort of stone, you know. Spray the weeds. Once the weeds are done, you know, you give it a year or two, it'll kind of, you'll have nice grass and it's just a matter of going in and mowing periodically. And we just aren't really set up for that. I just, I get it. Try to help and just just let me know. Appreciate it. The Dallas City site, probably could use some attention.
All right, so.
Thank you. Yeah. Other than that, great. Going good.
Are you thinking of some way over to town from one forty-one, just north of one forty-one? That's right on the edge of the rain.
Well. The weed commissioner usually takes care of those. Yeah, that's usually who we kind of contact and have them contact among those those things there. Yeah, they raise the roadside.
It's not just our, I think he's doing stake and highway as well.
Consistent.
Why discriminate? Oh, yeah, yeah. Update on that. So I did. He sent a first draft. In fact, I printed it out. But he's kind of wanting to know what salary range you want to put in there, where if you want to. If you want to put D O Q, you know, you can do that. I mean, that's depending on qualifications. Sometimes, sometimes if you, you know, and I'm gonna leave it up to you guys, you know, think about it. Um because, you know, that's the one thing, you know, and and Jack can visit with you, but the the draft he sent me had a salary range on it. Uh I think there are five or six openings right now. Yeah, in the state of Iowa.
What was this salary ranging?
He didn't put one on. He left it blank.
Well, I know there was some potential apple picking that year.
Hurry Canyon. I've been talking to people. I tried to get one. There's a really good one over in Central Iowa with a.
Assistant?
No. Or, you know, he was an assistant. Uh maybe he's been an engineer for five years and a really, really good sharp guy. You know. I talked to him on Friday for quite a while. I don't know.
You know, this county's pretty wild. You've got some ship shape.
It's a good county. There's no, there's no drama here. There's, you know, it's good people. You know, I mean, there's always these little things, you know, go on, but it's, but but for the most part, it's. She's smiling. At least in my world.
Coming down to the first floor.
My world. Yeah, I mean, great board. I mean, and this is what I tell people. I said, you know, you you want to do a really, really nice opportunity. There's all these new things to do.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we need a new shop facility down here. That's that's a project that somebody can see. There's the, there's the, you know, the the Steel Co projects that we're trying to kind of transition into. So there's some, there's new challenges. There's there's gonna be challenges, you know, opportunities for things that keep you busy. So but yeah, I've been for months, I've been talking to people, you know, I'm retiring, you know, that's my peers.
It's tough giving a range because you don't show your cards for you.
I think that's a conversation. So maybe, you know, kind of decided if there's two of you that are gonna kind of take some of this, we could sit down with Jack. You know, that way you don't have to get the whole board together. Get together with Jack and and just have a call with him and say, we're we're we're.
I do too.
I mean, the the I see a lot of them like that.
Look at the qualifications you've got. I mean, that surveyor stuff and all that. And that's worth a lot because that's saved us money.
Yeah. Yeah, this guy had that too. That's why I called him and said, I didn't know you had licensed and surveyor too. They're not very advanced. But so, yeah, so I don't know, you know, is there two of you that are gonna kind of take the lead on it?
We really haven't discussed.
Started to jump.
Well, I mean, we really haven't discussed amongst the board who who's gonna do it.
Let me just make it simpler, you know, because now I've got, he he gave me that kind of first draft. I'll look it all over. And then I thought, you know, we maybe get on the phone together at some point in time and get back to Jack. And then you you know, that way there's this board interaction with it. It isn't me talking to you, it's me going back and talking to Jack. It's I think it would be a lot smoother if we had.
Team effort.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
So I'm I'm fine with that in the long run.
Mr. Researcher?
Oh, that was for drinks the other day.
Well, they make them do all that other.
And you don't have to let me know. We don't have to decide right now. You don't have to decide right now.
He'd be fine with me.
Yeah.
I can do it. So you want two of us?
I think I think it would be nice.
Two, two is ideal.
Well, that's handy because you're both right here in Dennison too. So if I need to point you to mine, I can just kind of have you come in and get him on the phone. But I'll I'll kind of work with that first draft, you know, and go through some things, then I'll get back together with you guys, get back to Jack.
I don't know what researching has to do with this.
But look, you you check out their their paths, all that kind of research. There's researching to do it.
I'll be happy to do it.
Sounds good.
All right.
Again, apologies. I'll have it all.
There's a better chance you'll find these candidates in your search.
It all works out. Yep. So.
All right, thanks.
Have a nice work. I hope. Yeah, I don't know.
I do think on that.
Did you read through all that stuff sent by that Robert?
And then I seen the culling and stuff and I love it.
We we got time. We got time. All right. So we've discussed the eminent domain. So we're past that compensation board. As we've all been aware that as of today, uh compensation boards are no longer in effect in uh they've been dissolved unless we want one. And so that.
You run the vote, does it dissolve it?
Nope.
It's dissolved.
It's automatically dissolved.
If we want one, we have to vote to bring it back. Uh that would be the the action, the way I read it. So I guess we're gonna discuss, and I didn't put it take action because I think it's something that's.
We have plenty of time.
We have plenty of time.
No, we don't have to do it.
That's correct.
I mean, you do, but you don't. It'll be here before you.
Right, yeah.
Right, I just, right. My my point is just that if we decide to do nothing and we have no compensation board, three years from now, we can say, you know what, let's go back and have a compensation board. We could do that.
Right, right. But as of right now, we don't have.
As of right now, no, there is none in the state of Iowa.
That's right. So I think for us to just start thinking about whether we want to have one or not and bring it back whenever you're ready as.
Dissolve. Am I not looking at the right language? Am I not?
It was asked on July first.
I mean, that's the way I said, explained it to us. That's the way I.
That's why.
We agree. That's the way I understand it too.
Just made you read that.
It must be true then.
So just read that section. Read that section out.
A board of supervisors may dissolve the compensation board upon a majority vote of the members of the board of supervisors.
What's that date?
It sounds like we need a majority vote to dissolve.
Says a new subsection. And again, I, again, am I looking at? I don't know.
I think that's if you have one in place, that's how you can get rid of it.
Which we do.
But by statute, July first, they all go away. There is no.
I have to remember.
So if we would start one, if we keep one.
Start one.
And then decide at some point.
Decide to quit. That's how we end your board is by majority vote.
If we could have one of the work like.
Process for our compensation.
Take them every day.
If if we don't.
Frankly, mine. What's the process for? What's the process for an elected official compensation?
Have compensation board. My understanding is.
We decide.
We decide, but we have to show our work, right? And.
Negotiating is correct.
I like their baseline. If we can have a board like last year all the time to give them the new guides for them to operate under, I I mean, that what Pedden brought this last time was.
I am totally in favor of continuing the compensation board at this time.
As of, it says by law, all compensation boards are dissolved on July first, twenty twenty-four. Below will you find links to an outline of the changes with answers to comment questions as well as example resolution to establish a county compensation board. Please contact me if you have any questions.
That's from my side.
No, no, will you share it with me? I appreciate that. I love the cesspool emails that I have.
First, twenty twenty-four, Governor Reynolds signed a a Senate filed two four four two division five in the tax bill. Uh timeline. There's no timeline or deadline. There's no timeline or deadline for establishment of a compensation board, we've forwarded, so I don't have to read it to you, but, uh. So it's gonna be the, the choice of this board, whether we want to continue to have the recommendations, uh. You no longer have to go all by the same, you don't have to judge them, uh, adjust them the same. Uh, I'll print it, highlight it for you all.
So you're gonna have to, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I. I do think it went well, being that we had such a good year with them last year, and they really did their homework. And there is more checks and are more things that they need to do, show your work. I'm totally in favor of reinstating them, and I think we need to do it sooner than later, so that they, they know. That they, they need to expect what, to do it again, do the process, I hate to. Four months from now, ahead of time, say, oh, hey, by the way, you could do this again, I just would like to be on their radar sooner than later that. This route we're gonna go.
They made changes to the authority of the board of supervisors to adjust recommended compensation schedule. The supervisors may approve a compensation schedule that is greater than or less than the compensation board recommended. Uh, make adjustments to the compensation schedule for individual elected officials without being required to adjust by the same percentage for all others. Uh, set compensation at less than the current year, if compensation schedule recommends changing the position, i.e. county attorney to part-time. Stop, you said, uh, what is required of board supervisors, so you guys can all read, but.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That is the changes, that, that paragraph to me kind of, uh, lays that out, but if you decide not to, then we have to show our work.
I mean, to, to me, I guess if we would. Go forward with the compensation board. I would like to have them meet with us prior to that, maybe, maybe their chairperson. So we can give them some direction as to, maybe it's something, maybe we say, hey, we would like you to address. The elected officials to order by quarter and pressure with this year. Or we think that our recorder is underpaid, we just want you to address the regulations. You know, where we can be specific to them, so they know what we're thinking.
Correct.
And so they can come back. To try to satisfy what we're trying to accomplish.
I think that, the thing that I like the best about keeping the compensation board is it now gives us the, the rights, so. When they raise the sheriff to that high level, we don't have to be so concerned that if, you know, they recommend twenty thousand, and we want to adjust that by fifty percent, and you. Guys are only getting five, or two and a half.
Right.
That, that was the slippery slope we went down, and that one was really high. That we have to adjust, and also no longer do we have to do that, uh. If we choose to, uh, it really does state out that we have to keep the salary of the sheriff comparable salaries, that's, that's in there, um.
Right, and I think that we addressed that. Last year, because when it talks about the department, that the sheriff has to be the same as the.
Yep.
You know, that's one state department, Department of Homeland Security or Department, and it's hard, they don't say. The second sergeant, they just say of like, so remember when I brought those up when I was reading them online? So I mean, you can justify.
Right.
What you're stating using pretty vague information.
It's pretty vague. Uh, the city, city police chiefs employed by cities of similar population to the population of the county.
Right.
Which is, you know, really hard to find a, a city, you know.
But it never addresses the.
Yeah.
Overall economic state of the county. No, that's the, it never does.
Like the valuation, our valuation and so.
And what else is, you know, difficult for us is, you know, and whether we like it or not, the city of Denison has a police chief that pretty much takes care of nine thousand five hundred of the population. And the sheriff is basically in the outline, so we really, you know, to have a sheriff that they think he, so that's kind of like.
I don't know if it's intentionally built that gray.
Yes, I know, I think so.
You can say that if he's the police chief of half of the citizens of Crawford County, the city of Denison. He would be paid the same.
Right.
As the sheriff.
Right.
Supposed to have us.
Police chief is paid less than the sheriff.
But if we do what Shelby County does, where you have the sheriff, and then you have a first deputy that's in charge of.
But they don't have a, a police department in the state.
Sheriff takes care of all.
Which makes a little bit more sense to me then, but, uh, we digress, I'm sorry, Ty. We're digressing over here.
Last, to address your point, last year. I, I did have several talks before they met with, with Ted, and gave him a lot of directives. Going by what you guys had been saying in meetings.
So they do meet with the chairman.
They, they did with me, you know, to, to keep it simplified, I mean, we could have, we could have brought him in, but then it's an open meeting. You know, and it might mess up negotiations for department heads, so that's why I talked Ted individually.
Okay.
But I shared what most of you guys were talking about prior to that, and I think that's probably what helped them. Is the department heads kind of gave their people really good information to work with. And then Ted had something, and, and that, I mean, it was an excellent report that we got, I mean, we. I, I guess with all the other things that we've been doing in the courthouse, with hiring of auditors and all that, or excuse me, assessors and all that, I'm sorry, I wouldn't give you your job, boy. The, uh, I, I think that we learned more in the regulatory aspect of things that, that kind of helped us understand what they needed to be doing, and they did a little more research on their own as well.
They did.
So I mean, it all turned out really good, so I think you're, you're on a great track there, I think if we, we work together. It helps take a little bit of the politics out of it, you know, if we've got in individuals that aren't, you know, don't look like the board's picking on anybody. Now, we may have to give them, you know, listen, this is what the budget's gonna look like this year, please take that in, you know, don't get carried away and. Give somebody a fifty thousand dollar raise, you know, I mean, because that's not gonna happen, so they understand a little better what we're working with. Or what our expectations are for as far as expenditures, I think that's a great point, I just wanted to kind of elaborate on that, I think that's a great.
I know that, that, they, you met with them as a chairman.
And I think other chairs did too, I just.
Either that or they get come in here. On like the week or two before the first meeting, they would come in here.
Yeah.
Occasionally, but I, I would agree that. When they came in. It would get somewhat, open meetings was probably affecting some of the discussion.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, we didn't have any.
For good or bad, you know, whatever.
And most of the stuff I talked about was, this is what we're potentially looking at in the budget and stuff like that, you know? I mean, how much we're looking this, we don't want to get too carried away, and we don't want to give anybody a twenty thousand dollar raise, we just, it ain't in the budget, and it's, it's, it caused more turnover than it's worth.
Well, I think it helps the board to understand those numbers too, that gives them insight to, oh, here is the overall. All budget, what we're gonna flex here was like growth, here's, you know, the window that we're trying to work within.
We never truly know that till.
Right. You don't.
January.
No.
Yeah, we don't, I mean, but we're, you know.
You gotta have an idea.
Well, and I, and I let Ted know, we really are clueless this last year on what we were gonna have because of the, the changes in the tax code. Yeah, so we really, I said, both said, please don't get too carried away, you know? And I mean, that's, because we really, we didn't have a good idea.
So it sounded like us five were in favor of continuing with the compensation board, so we need to put it on the agenda to. Through resolution, reestablish the compensation board drop account.
And do we want to have anything specific guidelines right away, or just? I mean, think about that as well, do we need any specific guidelines we want to give to them right away, or?
They're right here, uh, as far as that they have to have the show your work aspect of it, that's in this, so, uh, what. Changes to the membership of the convers- conversation, compensation board is right there, what's changes are.
True.
If we, uh, put this on, you know, well, next week or whenever we put it on. Maybe it'd be a good idea to have Ted come in, when we pass it and discuss it.
Yeah.
And show him what the changes are in the show your work, and, and give him, so that he, I guess he has eyes on the resolution, what we're reinstating.
Sure, excellent point.
If he chooses to be on it, you know.
Hopefully he will, because he's, did a great job last year.
He takes it very serious, so, um, we can probably forward this to.
State our appreciation again.
Right.
You bet.
I can just forward this or print it so he has it or whatever.
No, it would, it would be nice, other than. Um, with ISAC, with information to get from it, rather than them always comparing light size counties.
Yeah.
To throw in that, hey, we are in the top ten poverty counties too, so how does that? Go into that correlation, how does that compare? With other counties, you know, and they just don't have a good comparison comparing those numbers. Because that's really where, where you, where you need to compare, it's not just, damn. You know, you got seventeen thousand people, they got seventeen thousand people, therefore you are the same.
That is not.
Well, it tends to be just race to the top too, because all of a sudden, okay, they give a big raise and, or a raise, and they're up here, well now, we're, you know, every county tries to.
It's a perpetual.
When does the ladder stop?
The Jones, so to speak, yeah, right?
The lateral stop when the taxpayers are fed up with how much they'd have to write a check for in March and in September.
That's right.
For no more purposes.
That's why we're all taxpayers, keep us in touch with reality, right?
Exactly.
I mean, ultimately, that's, that's, that's the litmus paper.
Let's do it in a week, let's start it next week, let's give it a little, uh, bit of time to kind of soak in and give us a chance, talk to Ted, and just kind of. And also next week, I'm gonna be, uh, in a hurry, because I'm leaving for California. But I'll be back, so I'll make a go from Tuesday to Tuesday. On my vacations.
Hey, I'm gonna be back in two weeks.
Yeah, man, okay, yeah, I did, I guess, did you guys talk at all before, or did you go right?
Did you see?
Did you go right into? Oh, okay, no, I didn't.
Um, Craig brought it.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's why he gets a lot of jobs, because he's just a good researcher.
Craig got a very.
With the establishment of it.
And we're gonna show that.
The establishment of that as an area service seat, okay.
That's all.
I mean, I went, I looked at it, and obviously it looked to me like it. I see their point. It's, you know, it almost looks like a lane at that point.
Or the, or the fence it, or the gated?
Yes. It looks like private property at that point, but it's still a road. I looked at the flat map, and well. It's divided, you know, it's not like it's all owned by one person, where they could sell that chunk off to. Mister Buck, and then it could be his private lane, so I.
Craig, tell Kyle about your.
Well, what was your? My point is on the, this whereas. Right, I believe it's the third one. Where it says all landowners must approve, make it a level C road. And so if now one landowner that is part of that says, I don't want it to be a level C. How can it be if one landowner is objecting? This was the original, and all the landowners now, it would be the person that owned the property, where it's Casey Buck owns property now. And so now that one is objecting to it, I don't see how it can stay a level C road, when our ordinance or resolutions, they said that all landowners or adjoining landowners must agree. They don't agree, that's only been Paul, yeah, to your point, that's only been Paul deal, we'll make it a C, as long as all landowners agree to it. Get that.
And I, Craig brought that up, the original, all of it became C, and now it has changed.
Yep.
Well, the landowners doesn't want it to be, so it seems like it's, uh, the law.
Well, and you can't. You can't landlock someone, you know, per se.
I mean, this is, this is the original resolution that has passed, and it says roads may only be classified as area service seat by resolution of the board. By all way.
Larger employer in the county.
All right. Women, just give them input, otherwise I call for adjournment.
I would, I did, I just got a couple.
And we never finished our supervisor.
Okay, yeah, I, I mean, we don't have to.
Oh, whatever, yeah, go ahead.
I just.
I never spoke.
Jean and I met with electrician on Thursday at the VA, and then I went back and met with the. Well, actually, the lumberyard people, got doors ordered for it. And we found a few things that needed to be reframed, that the doors weren't big enough. On their measuring doors. You know, Jake always wanted a thirty-six inch door, getting into his eighty room, and. And that, the room going into the private room wasn't a thirty-six inch door, so. So we just have to do some reframing already, which is very minimal now.
Very minimal, I would do it well, Jeff.
Through that, measuring doors, we figured that out.
Yeah.
And, uh.
Toby and Jake and Black.
And Dave is working with Black Hills Energy to get rid of four gas meters into one gas meter.
They were trying to impose all that cost onto us.
Yeah, but Dave.
But there is a leak inside, so that shifts.
Shifted.
The responsibility of said costs, so I think it's.
I think we will have zero to very minimal expense with that.
One break spot.
Yes.
But, uh, and then through Dave and I talk, and we were concerned about. The generator that we, how long ago was that, when Mister Baldwin was in here and presented a cost for that generator?
Two years.
But. Now, that's all one meter, and I, did we get a generator big enough to fire the, the whole building? That's my question, because if not, we need to address that.
You know, we talked about doing something that was only big enough for the, I mean, I.
No generator has been ordered.
Nothing's been ordered, I, to me, if, if. If you look at it, it's the public health rating, if we were in some kind of a medical crisis, or in, um, our power was an issue, or do we need that building powered up the whole thing, or? We just need to power certain aspects of the building.
Just to keep the refrigerator.
Originally was just to keep them free. Yep.
Ammonization freezers.
Yep.
Yeah, I guess I gotta ask. You know, Greenfield, they had a tornado and the hospital got hit, and they were scrambling to get patients. Anywhere they could.
Yeah.
Has public health building ever considered an overflow to a situation like that?
I don't know if it could.
Our current one, no, but.
I don't know that it could.
This one, they might be able to use the assembly area when we're all said and done to house some.
Or that.
For safety. Oh, down in the basement, maybe.
So possibly.
But the, the design of that door, I'm not sure if you're getting gurneys in there, no. But if you're wheeling wheelchairs in there, yes, you could probably get people in there, just because.
I didn't know.
No, I know, I'm just saying too, because. The distance from the door to the first impeding wall is probably not big enough for said, said gurney, if you're trying to bring patients in. In a lying down position, but if they're in wheelchairs and stuff, it would access, be able to be accessed very easily into that conference room.
By the bathroom, and then shut the door, and then go back through.
Possibly, if those are wide enough, and I don't know how wide they are.
But we can also do it upstairs.
You know, with the schools, the fine arts centers.
Yeah, I don't know, it could or not, I'm just saying.
So back to.
Sorry.
The original point. Are we gonna get a generator big enough for the whole building? If not, we need to address wiring for those critical infrastructure pieces.
Yeah.
Prior to that now, they need to be brought to a panel that is serviced by said generator.
Yes. That's a great, great point.
And, uh, Jim did call me and remind me that we need those two up there for the freezers upstairs.
Right.
They heard that we were.
But if we're not, if we're gonna power the whole building up, it's gonna be simple. Put it outside, the transfer switch outside.
Put a big transfer.
We only have one inside, yeah, we have one meter now, so we just, what's the difference in the cost of a generator?
Exactly.
Well, we should probably add twenty-four to thirty, or twenty-five to thirty-five, shouldn't we? And what would it take to power the whole building?
I forget what the heck they said that was.
I do have all that information.
Jake should still have that quote, I would think, but.
I don't know.
He went up to a ninety something.
Was it a ninety thousand? Yeah, he was.
That's what the question I thought, because I can't remember, because I'm thinking. We, at the fire station in Charter Road, I think that's, uh. It was the twenty-five K.
Twenty-five K M here, thirty, thirty-five.
And we got it used, so I mean, we didn't give much for it, but. Everything in that building is electric, and I turned everything on in that building in Charter Road, it never came off a night. I had electric heat going, the air conditioner's going, all the air compressors going, all the fires, all that stuff.
And just.
Didn't we talk about seventy-five?
So that was overly oversized for that building.
I think that that twenty, I mean, it's a little, I don't know, I probably wouldn't pull a whole lot more than yours on a normal. I mean, there's a few extra offices and stuff.
Lights and refrigerators really don't draw a lot, I just did a check on the. In my, my wife's new building, because she's got a meat cooler in there, she's sharing space with vintage beef. In a month's time, it pulled two kilowatts. So is that electric heat over there, or is that gas heat? It's a, and the, and the Alex building, yes.
Yeah.
So electric, so you're just running the fan. Fans and lights.
Yeah.
So that, uh, twenty-five, it probably worked over there, back.
I wonder if that freezers are the biggest.
Nina, this is a specific project.
The folks at Fox Creek. Would have had it maybe a potential lead on like a USB grant or.
Potentially. I mean, we just have the board, we might need to decide sooner or later.
Yeah, well, I did go talk to Jake today to see if he's ordered his stuff that he needs because he's gonna be holding us up if he doesn't. So he's gonna get a little mini splitter ordered and the things that he needs so that when we're ready, he's ready.
Can the electrician make a estimation?
I would think so, because I, I think Mister Baldwin had an estimate, I think.
Because it was talking like emergency, an emergency type situation, you know what I mean?
They're gonna light it up like a Christmas tree.
Like, yeah, but I don't know that it's the uses intended for that initially.
We're gonna send the people, the regular staff home if it's that big of an emergency, we're not gonna be running at full staff with all computers going.
You need to pull like your last. Take a sampling of your full usage figure and I don't know if DMU can pull that means it's been set up. A couple of years.
I mean, I would have faith in whenever the electrician would say to power the whole building. That's what we would need. It sounds like it'd just be easier hookup, easier to run.
Well, definitely, it might be. Yeah, it would definitely be easier to hook up a generator that just. Trips, switch strips and fires.
Lot of like, lot of access, you wouldn't have the extra boxes either interior wise.
Well, we're gonna have to rewire some of the outlets where these fridges and stuff are going.
Probably the freezer upstairs and examining.
Would it be much different than what they're using now? I know it's a. Other stuff, this size building, but yet you still have the same amount of computers, employees and.
Right.
This only thing that's gonna be the difference is this new freezer that they have that they're gonna plug in for their vaccine.
But it shouldn't draw that much.
My, my recent history with the freezer, I was expecting a lot more, so.
Do we want somebody to come in next week and talk about that, get that on the agenda, because what we don't wanna have happen is we're ready.
Just get written something from Larry.
Yeah. Let's get it done.
He's our electrician?
Yeah, he's doing electrician.
Let's just make that decision and get it done, so that when we're ready, that we're not holding up on anything and that should be easy enough to do. Before it's done. Whatever this board decides, let's do it. What on the agenda? Will you have time by?
Uh, we put on the agenda, we put on the agenda, Larry might be able to just look at it and say, you're gonna take. The size of these panels are gonna be.
Maybe you could get the cost.
More qualified than anybody.
Me, Baldwin, I trusted his. Ballpark cost, because you need a transfer selection.
Larry's been in there now.
So discuss take action generator at the city center?
Yes, let's do it.
Is that this board's discretion to do? I saw the Star Building, yeah, thank you, I'm just saying it out.
This board will correct you if you are wrong, trust us.
Yeah, I don't know, we, we don't need to purchase one, we just need to know.
What size you're kinda looking at.
We need to, only thing that I'm curious about is how much power, because that freezer's like a seventy below thing, so I mean, it might use more than what we're.
What you get, I mean, this one.
What you're called.
It's small, it's small.
As you don't open the door.
It's a tabletop kind of a deal.
Yeah.
I just was curious.
Yep.
Usually heating something will draw more.
Obviously, the ladies would be a lot more careful if they were down on power over there and then they wouldn't leave the door open on this one.
Obviously.
Yeah.
I guess that was my biggest thing.
Alright, alright.
I'm gonna talk to you about something after meeting, no?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, alright. So, you're up.
Okay, since, uh. While we were having our meeting Friday, I got thrown out of the Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Meeting, because they went into a closed session, so I don't really know for sure what went on. Like, if we were having our meeting, I could have went into that on, on. Teams, they get a little circuit on teams that they can do that with. In any event, I didn't, I don't know for sure what all was discussed there. It was over a. I can't get into details of that too, I guess, so there was, there, it was just a complaint file, but complaint, complaint kind of thing, that's, that's all I'll give you. Uh, didn't, don't know where that was going and Kyle Stecker was giving me a little bit of brief on it, but he could, because I wasn't in the meeting. So I really, I'm sitting here just throwing out that there's a little issue there going on. But, uh, otherwise, uh. Um, they hired, they, they never had an official legal counsel over there, you know, you were thinking of something like that and didn't sure have one. I mean, they, they would hire lawyers as they needed. They got put Cooney and Ayers on a, on a retainer, so to speak. Only the executive director and the chair of the commission can actually speak with him, you know, without. The full board's consent. Um, anyway, or full commission's consent, consent. The, otherwise, that they're, they're going through their audit, you know, and it's just about done. So I'll be able to give you an update on that when it comes in, otherwise it was routine stuff, I got the packet printed up, if you guys wanna look at it. Um, then I also did my trip to the Select Summit USA. Um, I think our, uh. Chair of our International Economic Development Task Force through NACO actually did a great job. Training us up, so we were ready for everything that'd be coming at us there. And still a lot of things that I learned that, well, I wish I'd knew that, I wish I'd had this, I wish I'd had that. Um, I'd already, I've already been talking with Stephanie and Paul over here on some things to make us a better prepared county. For these type of things. There's a lot of questions get thrown at me that I wasn't expecting. I did find one company that was a Turkish company that. And I think would have really fit the wheelhouse of a new sense of diversity of, I sent some emails back and forth. With, with several of these outfits that I've been, and I was talking to over there. Um, from one, one, well, one guy was from Ukraine, but he actually worked with a German company. And there was, he had some German and Ukrainian companies that were interested in, in a small area. Uh, the Turkish one though would require, once their building would be complete. Fifty to up to when it's complete and fully operational, he said, which could take anywhere up to five years or more. Uh, could be up to a four hundred person employment. But it was electronics component and they do different automotive electronics, and so there'd be people putting together electronics boards and stuff like that. And they do a lot with the EV industry. And there's a lot of electronics in the batteries themselves, which I have no idea how those batteries work, but they do a lot of those excluding. So I mean, it would have been something that would have created some diversity, might have been some engineering jobs that would have brought our kids back. You know, that, that are into them kind of thing, you know, I mean, that was the other things that I was looking for. What kind of jobs might our kids go off to college for? That might be good here, you know, and Stephanie reminded me before I went, always try to stay within our cluster. But if you step out of a little bit, just make sure it's something that like WIT can help train up for, you know, and WIT's really good at training up with all of our local industries, so. That would be something that, you know, it, it seemed like an interesting, you know, will I be able to make something out of that? Well, I'm trying, you know, we'll see what happens, but. Um, because we didn't have shovel ready, that was a big disappointment as high as I could see it. Um, and. Getting shovel ready with an industrial park. I think, you know, there's different places we could do it, there's a little, there's, there's a fair amount of work we gotta do. But if I, if I remember right, and please don't hold me to this quote, but I think Steph said, now this would have been from Whitco's perspective. Maybe it's a little different with DMU or somebody else, but to get a transfer station put up to the size that you would need at an industrial park, you're looking probably three to five years. I mean, so, these are things that we probably need to start working on. I mean, I don't think, I have no information, so I, I'm not implying anything. That any of our present employers are going anywhere, you know, as far as I know, everybody's happy and they're on full steam ahead. But you wanna always make sure that you're not gonna compete with them hard, you know, in a hard way where it's gonna suck a lot of employees on them. But we were used, I did, like, the fellow, the Turkish fellow, he asked, what, what is our average employment cost? And actually, when I gave him the numbers from what your general, you know, the people that work at Smithfield and Monogram and, and then. I, I was purely guessing that Petersons and some of the others were on a similar playing field. But he was really encouraged by that, I mean, he was sitting there figuring the numbers, so that didn't, that, that didn't run him off, I mean, as far as I go, then he asked. He said, well, what is their work ethics like? I said, we're, we're a Midwestern community with a large immigrant population. And I would classify them as workaholics, so, you know, he, he really liked hearing that. But, uh, I mean, as, as far as it goes, there was a lot of stuff that in each of these, they set it up where I can do interviews with them. And set, schedule meeting times. I mean, it was really well set up and I was really kicking it right out of the box. In fact, Sunday morning, they didn't even start till Sunday after dinner officially. And I was already having a meeting Sunday morning, they'd called. You know, I mean, I got down there, started walking around, people are pulling me aside, so I was using my. Gift of drawing attention. I'm, I'm probably, there was probably three people walking around the whole place and that counts a big booth from Texas, I mean, they had. But I'm probably one of three people walking around in a cowboy hat, so everybody was curious about the cowboy. Then everybody said, are you from Texas? And I said, no, I'm from Iowa. But I said, we got cowboys everywhere in the United States. Anyway, that was, that drew a lot of attention to me. So I mean, that, that I talk, I. If I shook one thousand hands, I shook five thousand and I talked to everybody, of course, you guys all know that. And luckily, they preposition water coolers everywhere, so I could have wet my whistle, because I, I did a lot of talking for us. I learned a lot and things to go back with in the future, but we've gotta do some development here, I mean. I didn't get a lot of requests for spec buildings, though a few people inquired about what type of spec buildings we had, but the, the industrial park shovel ready. And then I really blew my mind, because you're talking to people from all over the world. All of them were talking about green energy stuff. I mean, so this isn't just something that our current administration's putting out. This, people from all over, now, do they do that because our current administration talks about it so much? That I don't know. But, uh, I mean, it was, it was, it was real interesting and, and I will tell you, it was very beneficial and if you guys wanna take some more time and talk about it. I can still talk more, but I mean, I don't wanna bore you to death with it, but it was very positive from my perspective. They had it laid out extremely well to where you gotta meet a lot of people and everybody was friendly. I mean, and I don't remember meeting anybody from Russia, but I, or Belarus or places like that that might be in conflict. But I, I mean, Nepal, you just take a, pick a country, and I probably talked to somebody from it while I was out there. So it was very interesting, did a little bit of, you know, build relationship building, you know, I mean, stuff like that, you know, people's. In particular, I'd like to talk a lot more with the Turkish fellow, but I think he was in demand because he was looking for shovel ready. But anyway, you never quit digging, because this shovel ready today might not be what he was after, so.
Do you think he found it?
Do, do I think I?
Do you think he found a shovel ready?
I would be willing to bet, yes, because a lot of these places, now, I, I worked some with our Iowa booth and their, their state. But, uh, you know, they're searching for the whole state. Now, some of the different, like Cedar Rapids had people there, Allegiant and Alliance were different, that's the power companies from on the other side, they had stuff there. I'm gonna see about if we go again, getting Whitco more interested, because Stephanie, I, I, I don't know, if I thought about it once, I thought about it a hundred times. God, I wish I had her here with me, because she's so sharp, you know, she had, she would have had really good answers where mine's were good. Hers would have been really good, you know, so I mean. We gotta do some more development, her and I involved in work on that, I actually got a meeting with them for economic development stuff today. And for an increase our tax base, this is where we gotta, this is some of the, one of the places that we gotta go, I mean, we gotta develop more. And then I think that will draw in the more housing, I actually talked to housing developers or other, everybody that developed or built something was out there. And the site selection people, these companies that do that, that these foreign companies will call, hey, I need a site, this is what I'm looking for, we wanna be on their list. And there's some things that get us into there, but I mean, I think that. We can sell ourselves pretty good too. Now, I've, I've learned that, you know, and, and to quote our chair, who was out there and was working with us a lot, Brettton. He's a, he's, he said, he said, you're doing an excellent job, your county, your county's lucky to have you, that's what he bragged, that's what he said. He said, you're, you're out there mixing and mangling and you got, and you got a good message for people, you know, I'd brag of what we do have. You know, I mean, we, we've got a county that's developing, you know, all of our quality livestock and all them things, so these, these are the things that I was talking to folks about. I mean, it really went well. Um, I was busy.
To go with you?
What's that?
Paul, we'd go.
You know, I, yeah, I, I think it'd be a great thing for him to go to, maybe it's something, you know, I did our reconnaissance, maybe it's something that Paul and Stephanie go to. You know, maybe you don't need me there. I will tell you though, they like being able to talk to a public official. That, because I was there, it showed that much more interest from our county. And since I'm the guy that, you know, I, I had to explain to him, I'm on a board of five, so there's five heads that do all the thinking there, so I mean, you gotta. We gotta all agree on something, but we actually are all, we're all pro Crawford County and we wanna develop and build our county. I tell, and this actually really resonated well, especially with the Europeans, when I would tell them that, listen. We wanna develop our county, we wanna have more for our kids to come back to, we wanna be able to afford more amenities of life in our county, we wanna have better road network. We're always working on everything to be better, but one thing that's extremely important to us is our families. And we like to be able to walk out the back door after dark and look up and see all the stars. So we don't wanna live in it, and the guy from Belgium says, that sounds like somewhere I need to move to, you know. I got, I was talking to him, Belgium's like a city, I mean, the country is under light, you know, looking at it on a nighttime map, you know, Belgium's a bright light right there. And I said, well, you guys are already like trying to move out of there, you're buying Budweiser and all the beer companies, so you just, well, come on, move the rest of the way over, you know, so. But the, you know, it was a good, it was a great time, as far as, because I like to meet people, so, I mean, it did well. And I think it really benefited us, at least what we can build on now, you know, even.
It's, it's a process.
Yeah, it is.
It's a process, you're a lot more. Now than there was before you went. There's like something, some, some substance there.
You bet.
To build off of.
Well, and you know, the, the good part here is, you know, it was, it was meeting with people all over the world, but it still gave me, you know, backgrounds or how to, how to. Who, what, what we're on the dress with people domestically too, I mean, so, you know, what people are looking for here isn't gonna be much different than what they're looking for in there. They get more hoops they gotta jump through to come here, but you know, at this summit, they had. They had a little, in the back of the, or the, you know, like where all the booths were set up, they had a big old semicircle of government agencies. Basically, if it's a government agency you have to deal with, they were all out there, so all these people could go talk, and I actually went and talked to some of them. On seeing the complications of certain industries that I was talking to that seemed very, oh, that'll be easy to work with. You know, I mean, security stuff, because, you know, I had, I had multiple people from the Ukraine wanting to do stuff here. I suppose they're trying to get into a, a less, uh.
Hostile.
Hostile environment where they know that their building isn't gonna get, you know, leveled next week. Uh, but also some of it was, uh, you know, weapons manufacturing, and that was one of the things I went and talked to the Homeland Security about. I said, how do I vet that, you know, and then I don't know if you heard, in Europe, there was a place there that got blown up by. Potentially by the Russians, because they were creating munitions for Ukraine, well, I don't wanna bring something here that's gonna have an explosion in our back. You put a target on it, you know, but I also, I'm a soldier, I'm not afraid, so let's bring it on, you know, but that's still, this is where, this is where our families are. So I'm a little bit more cautious at that rate, but hoping for a genuine, I know, I mean, that, that would be for us to decide, you know, I mean, not for me. So I mean, I talk to everybody, you know, and if you wanna talk to me, I'm holding on my briefcase, I got a stack of cards. Heck, and I took it. Uh, Brettton said, make sure you bring a brand new box of cards, and I gave away about a half a box of cards, and I probably. If I'd have been. At the, all the evening festivities and stayed late, I mean, it didn't sound like anything ever ended before midnight, but. So I probably could have gave away a lot more cards, because you know, a lot more business is done on the golf course, they like to say. I mean, you know, they had, they had functions after, you know, after, in the evenings where meet for meal, I actually went to one that was with the Financial Times. Putting on, there was a lot of people there. And then, uh, that last night was, this was their tenth anniversary for it, so they had a big, from like, I think it was eight to ten. They had an outstanding band and I gotta show you pictures, I got a picture with Teddy Roosevelt, guy dressed up like him, and then I also that night got another picture with a. Great big, big ol' head, this guy's dressed up like Teddy Roosevelt, George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, it was kinda fun. But it was a great way to break the ice, you know, and everybody relaxed a little bit, so you really gotta talk to some people. What are your really, you know, what are your, what are your real timelines, you know, I mean, because I was looking for somebody that was in that three to five year window, because then we could. Open up shop and go to work for him, you know, but.
Do you think that it'd be worthwhile to sit down with Paul and Steph and, I mean, you have contacts you wanna follow up with?
Oh, yeah, I've already been following up.
Have you?
Yeah, yeah, it's a. Hey, it's been busy weekend. I got a meeting in three minutes. I guess it's an economic development meeting in three minutes, so.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, that's just.
Thank you for the update.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything else that they wanted to bring up? We can always go back to it next week.
Yeah, I have to get more.
I know time's gotta go, but I'll just briefly, because it was brought up, our discussion column was here about. The pipeline and what would happen if it stayed, they could give it to anybody. Or sell it, and Iowa code says no permit shall be sold or transferred without written approval of the board, that's the I U B board.
Yeah.
A petition for approval of the sale or transfer shall be jointly filed by the buyer or transferee. And the seller or transferee shall include assurances that the buyer, transferee is authorized, a transact business in State of Iowa. Is willing and able to construct, operate and maintain the pipeline in accordance with these rules. And if the sale or transfer is prior to completion of construction of the pipeline, shall show that the buyer, transferee has the financial ability to pay. A potential fifty thousand damages associated with destruction or operation of the pipeline or any other amount the board determines necessary when granting the permit. So I mean, they can, but it has to be approved by the I U B, you might say, well, the I U B approved this, they'll approve that, but there is a method. They just can't do it.
What's the code section on that?
Uh, that's ten, I'm sorry, that's one ninety-nine, ten point one seven, that's. Ten point one seven, Iowa code one ninety. Ten point one seven, Iowa code one ninety nine.
That's alright. Good research again before you get out of here, so, excellent, alright, anything else? All the labor, I. Time, we will now officially.